Okay. I'd like to have called to order the May 16th meeting of the Avalon City Council. If you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your hand over your heart and say.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
And if we could just pause for a moment to remember Don Hinnaker, father of Michael and Michelle Hinnaker, are there more children than the two? And who passed away recently. And City Manager, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Cassidy.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Sampson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Olson.
Mayor.
Mayor Marshall.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor, I will mention that since I do not have the clicker, we will be, I will ask you to do voice vote. Somebody has the clicker. You have the clicker.
Always gonna do the clicker.
Thank you for your assistance in that regard.
Yeah, thank you. We can extend it all the way over to you very easily, so. Okay, thank you.
How is it? Hey. Me can't see.
Oh, it was turned. Oh, okay.
How much did that cost?
And if you would introduce the first item.
Yes, Mayor, the first item is a proclamation will be presented to Judy Greer for her volunteerism in Avalon. And as noted on the agenda, Ms. Greer is also being recognized by the Los Angeles County Commission for Older Adults at the 52nd Annual Older Americans' Recognition Day Awards. District 4 will celebrate their honorees at a luncheon sponsored by the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors and the LACC O A.
Thank you. And Mrs. Greer, if you please step forward by the podium.
Older.
It's a key word.
Brian Timer.
Yes.
This is Bob, President of the City Council of the City of Avalon, and I'm here. As a six-year-old, I'm a little bit old. He just did the work by his own, or his own dedication.
To the best interests of the community. Thank you. As retired educator, she continues to substitute and assist the Avalon Schools English Department, is president of the Friends of the Library, vice president of Catalina Kid Ventures, secretary of the Catalina Island Women's Golf Club, and on the Catalina Island Medical Center Board of Directors. She is also a member of the Art Association. On May 31st, Judy will be honored at the 52nd Annual Older Americans' Recognition Day Awards Program. This year's theme is, what is it? Oh, okay. Age Out Loud, when the reflects what today's older adults have to say. Now therefore, please thank Judy for her distinguished service for making a difference in the lives of those around her and dedicating her time and resources to our community. Date is the 16th day of May, 2017, by the Avalon City Council. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Presentation number two.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Jim Lucahan, the CEO of the Catalina Island Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau, will provide a brief summary of the visitor profile study that was conducted and give highlights on the achievements in the advancement of the Chamber's marketing efforts.
Good evening, Councilmembers. I'm going to start off by introducing Lauren Schlow. Boy, that's really loud. Lauren Schlow is a consultant who's been working with us over the course of the past year to conduct the visitor profile study, and she's trying to make the 7:30 boat, so I'm going to put her on first, and I'll come behind her.
That was funny.
Thank you, Jim, and thank you, Council, for having us here today to, and to show your support for the tourism industry. I'm going to show you a lot of numbers, but I'm going to try to boil them down to their essence and not make you too, like, swimming here, even though it's an island, but we're going to try to make this digestible. And I also want to thank the city staff who was of assistance in this endeavor, especially Robert Messer, who's here. So, let's see if I can do this. Forward, let's, yes. All right, so there's a lot of little things here. What this basically says is that tourism supports your economy. We're trying to measure it. We did a study. We've been here three times, three quarters, spring, summer, and fall, and we aggregated the findings of face-to-face visitor studies, 600 roughly, and asked them a lot of questions about where they're from, why they're here, how they got there here, what they're doing while they're here, and very importantly, their spending, as well as some demographics. There's two pieces to this puzzle. One is economic and fiscal impacts, which is what we're going to do today. We're going to give us two indigestible pieces. We are working on the visitor profile, which says who they are and where they're from and their demographics. We'll be preparing that shortly and giving that to Jim within the next couple weeks, few weeks. So, we're going to do this economic impact, but it's these two pieces, they'll be put together, and there'll be a full report shortly. So, this is for calendar year 2016. You can basically say, in a given year, this is what tourism does in this community. So, overall, 908,000, roughly almost a million annual visitors this year. They come in all, any way that they can arrive here, we've documented that. So, that's one number. The next number is those people stay about 1.2 to 3 days, 1.4 days, and that comes out to 1.3 million visitor days. So, that means you have, they have a chance of spending money more days than just their number of volume because they spend each day that they're here. Again, it's 1.4 for all visitors. Those who stayed only overnight visitors, they stay about 2.25 days, so there's an overnight stay there. They're spending about, per capita, $125 a day while they're here, and if they stayed overnight, they're spending about $158. So, you can see the difference of an overnight stay on spending. That spending aggregated to all those 904, 8,000 visitors runs into 159, let's say for argument's sake, $160 million of direct visitor spending here on the island this year. And what that generates for the city is 5.1 million in lodging tax and 700,000, little over 700,000 in retail sales tax, and then in addition are the wharfage fees and the harbor fees and the admissions fee, which is another 4.9 million. So, tourism is basically worth 10 to 11 million dollars to the city. We have also estimated that they support 1,152 jobs. I'm sorry that didn't come out clearly, but it's full-time equivalent positions that are supported through tourism spending and activity. This gives you a capital summary of, by each lodging type. That's how we measure the visitors because lodging is a finite number. We know how, what the supply is on all these. We asked a lot of people, how many campsites, how many vacation rentals, how many moored boats, and people responded and gave us this information, and then we aggregate that into, from our study, we know the percentage, that's day visitors, which is the majority, 600,000 out of the 900,000 are day visitors, so it's 2/3, 1/3 are overnight. This also tells you how, the length of stay of each type of visitor, and then their generated visitor days, and their group size. So, roughly about two people per group here, a little over two. How they spent their money, what did they spend, how much did they spend, who spent the most? What we can see here is that of that 160 million, each visitor spent about 123 per day. Hotel visitors spend the most, aggregated up $82 million out of the 160, so it's about almost a little over half of the total. The day visitors spent 48 million, so there's a big bang from day visitors, because of their volume, and that's 31% of total spending. And then the third highest category, which is a little surprising to me, not knowing the exact dynamics of the economy here, are those staying in moored boats, and they generated about 14 million or 9% of the total. And the detail for each one of those lodging segments is shown there. In terms of comparative segments, so I'm just comparing two segments for you on this slide, but we have this for every one of the segments that you see on the prior page. We took hotel visitors because they're the highest spending. What do hotel visitors spend their money on? They spend about $92 a night on lodging. That is not their lodging rate, by the way. That's spending aggregated across the group size. So, if there's two to three people per group, that's their spending for that whole group. They spend about 38, almost $40 on meals, about $12 on beverages, and shopping and gifts, 24. And that's their per capita daily spending, which comes up to the $195 total that each hotel visitor spends, and that's aggregated up to $82 million. In comparison, so now we show you the day visitor, which is a little bit lower, but they've got the highest volume, there's no lodging spending, obviously, but they're spending about $22 a day on meals and about $9 on beverages, so their food and beverage runs about $30. And they're spending almost what hotel visitors spend on shopping, which is $23, which is a little unusual. Usually we see a lot more by hotel visitors. In this case, the day visitor is spending on shopping, which is a good sign, and that shows you their $48 million there. So, that's just a comparative. And then what we're showing you here is, this is kind of the share of their spending, what people are, and this is again, overall, for the overall visitors. You can see how their lodging is the highest category. It's roughly about 30% of spending, almost, 29.8%, and then the meals, shopping and gifts, and so on down the line. So, it's just a visual of what they're doing. So, it gives you a good idea of what they're doing while they're here as well, when you see what they're spending on, including admissions and tour and things that they're spending while they're here.
I'm sorry if you don't mind.
Yeah.
How do you break out beverages separate?
Because we ask them. We specifically ask, the way the question is worded, thinking of all the things you have or are planning to spend money on today, and we ask them for one day, and then we aggregate it for more than one day. How much are you spending for meals out, beverages out, shopping and gifts, kind of the retail items, and all those categories, local transportation, fine arts decor?
Right, right. So, that's from a Coke to a Mai Tai?
Yep, exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Then, here's the tax breakdown. So, this is a little tricky, but not exactly. So, what we do is, the taxable spending, which when we've aggregated that, is $112 million, and you go, but wait a minute, Lauren, you just told us visitors are spending 160 million. That includes taxes and tips. Like, I just spent $6 on a coffee and a cookie, and I gave her a tip. What we do is back that out when we're trying to determine what the tax portion is. So, this is the taxable sales before the taxes. So, that's what our net taxable sales is. Admission fees, aside from your admissions, which is a little different kind of admission, but for movies and that sort of thing is not taxable, so there's no tax there. But, so that is where you see at the very top, 5.1 in lodging, based on what they told us their lodging spending is, and the other categories, meals, beverages, shopping, part of transportation, which is taxable, part of amenities, the services aren't, but the products are, and part of groceries, because as we know, groceries are not, but if you're in the grocery store and might buy yourself some suntan oil or something, that is taxable. So, those taxes add up on the retail side to 703,000, and then the total is 5.8 million. And then we're also showing you the locally levied wharfage admission and harbor use fees that added up to 4.9 million, almost five, and there's your 10 million in tourism generated either by their trip or by their spending, the taxes to the city. In order to calculate the jobs, this is an interesting little trick. Okay, so, we have to go back to the sales by sector, and these are the sales aggregates, but this is net of taxes and tips. But we had to add back the admissions because they do support jobs. So, this is another calculation of 77 million, excuse me, this retail. The total there is 120 million because we've added back the admissions. There is a formula that the State of California Tourism Office calculates, they have an economist, and these are sales required to support one job. So, and this for LA County, and it's by county, it's produced by the state. So, for example, it takes 88,900 roughly dollars of spending to have one person be supported in a hotel, and that's what we're showing. So, for all that $42 million of visitor sales in hotels, that is supporting 478, and we're calling them full-time equivalents. We know a lot of people here work part-time jobs, but what we're saying is, we're looking at from the other side, which is the sales to support that position, not how many jobs people have. And our calculation shows almost 1,200 jobs are being supported on a full-time equivalent basis here in Avalon, or in Catalina. Mainly Avalon, essentially, it's Avalon. So, you can see that hotel is the largest, the lodging segment, then the meal segment, which is essentially restaurants, 365 jobs, and then beverages. So, what I'm saying is beverage sales supported that many positions, because there's not just beverage places, a lot of places serve beverages, and a lot of places serve meals. So, it's meals support that many positions, beverage shop spending supports 127 positions, and retail positions, tourists are supporting about 94 retail positions, and then so on. Oh, the transportation is fairly large, too, it's 62. We did a little, just to look at this by season to see if there's a difference. This is our unweighted data. When you get the final report, you'll see might some slight differences, but the magnitude and the comparisons will be about the same. And really, the length of stay does not vary much by season. It's running almost a day in all three of those seasons. The overnight length of stay is between 1.89 and 2.0, almost 2.0 nights, and the daily per capita spending, a little bit lower in the fall, that may have to do with the drop possibly in lodging, they may drop their lodging rates, especially from the summer, but spring and summer are very comparable. So, just a comparison again for seasonality. And then, we just got the domestic versus international. Very small share, but a share of tourism here are from international countries, almost 2%, whereas 98% are domestic, and you can see the volume numbers there. It's quite a difference of 14,000, 15,000 versus 893,000. And the spending is a little bit different, spending per visitor for day, per day, domestic are spending a little bit more than international. In a lot of markets, it's the other way around. But, yeah, I've got two spending figures in there. I'm trying to figure out why that's in there, because the second one is showing that international's spending a little more, so I need to check on that. But typically, international does, they stay a little bit longer, they spend a little bit more, but in this case, they also have a smaller group size. So, their spending is a little bit larger than their share of volume, so their share of volume is 1.6%, their spending aggregated to 2.7 million is about 1.7% of their share. And you can see there, though, their smaller group size. And I think that's it. That's your summary, that's your capital summary, but I'm very happy to answer any questions or explain our methodology. We do use an economist for this, from CIC Research in San Diego. He takes the tourism, all the data that we collect from the visitors, each of the seasons, aggregates it all together, weights it, and runs it through basically an in-plan model, which is an economic input-output model, and comes up with this. This is a methodology that I've been using in many, many destinations. I knew Jim from Ventura, where we did this in 2006, '07, Oxnard, West Hollywood, Beverly Hills, Santa Monica, Huntington Beach, Laguna Beach. I do a lot of this kind of work and use these models, and it also makes your tourism comparable to how other destinations are doing because we use the same methodology.
How's the information compiled?
Direct, face-to-face. We had an interviewer here, handheld tablet computer that has the survey on it, and she goes to random visitors. We were down at the mall, we were on the harbor.
Just asking people.
Just asking them, are you a visitor, are you here from out of town? Which almost everybody here is. You've got a million people coming in, so we.
These are actual figures?
Yeah, through the model, that are modeled.
Oh, through the model, okay.
Yeah. And through the data that we get from the ferry and all the other sources that were provided to us.
The actual data, and then you combine that with what you compile while you interview?
Correct.
Nice, okay.
Yeah, and the tenders, and, you know, I even talked to the guy yesterday, yeah, and we get 85 to 90% of those people off those cruise ships and get them onto the island, so, included them as well. Boats moored in the dock, and et cetera.
Were you able to compare any of those figures with sales tax and admissions and harbor use fees from the city? Did you receive any data from the city?
We actually did, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Messer, provide that to us. So, that's why when he came up, my economist came up with a little larger amount, we realized there was a mistake in his formula and got it right down to what the city said, so, which means that he's, the economist told me that the tourist gave him good data, because he didn't have to do a lot of massaging to get the numbers, where we have finite things that we know, like TO tax, like retail sales tax, like the number of hotel rooms and what the occupancy is. We did not have to do a lot of, sometimes we have to massage a little more. He said it was very good data, so, we're happy to hear that, you never know.
And just, so the price of the boat to get over here, that doesn't look like that's included in those figures?
Correct, because it's paid over there. Now, if they bought the ticket here, they should have told us, yeah, I bought the ticket, I'm going to buy my return ticket here, that should go to you guys.
That was pretty unlikely, though.
Probably so.
It swam over.
And we took out the residents, we did, we finally got from, and they were great. Catalina Ferry gave us their percentage of people on commuter passes versus non, so we had an estimate, it's 11% of our commuter passes. We assume those to not be visitors and to be, so in case you didn't know that.
Yeah, that.
I hope I'm telling too many secrets about Catalina here, Express.
Does anybody from the audience have any questions?
Yes.
Was there a question about how many visitors would return? Would choose to return?
We don't have the, would choose to return, what we do know is how many trips they've taken here in the last three years. Like, if they're a new, if this is their first time, or if they're a repeat visitor, if they're a repeat, we ask them how many trips they've taken in the past three years, and that'll be in the next part of this, so you'll get to see the repeat visitation patterns. And most people, not surprisingly, are from the greater Los Angeles, Southern California area. Most are repeat visitors. I mean, you have that, some of that already in the seasonal.
Yeah, it's going to be interesting.
Thank you.
It's going to be interesting to compare because if we don't run out of time, and I get to some of my slides, I've been looking at our website data, and we're skewing more and more and more new users to our website, which is good, you want to always engage new people. So, I think we've got an engaged audience that maybe don't need us as a resource, and they're already coming here, and then the good news is, we're finding new audience to help drive to the local economy, too.
Great.
Tony?
Yes, sir.
On the scale of size, how many would you actually?
Yeah, we talked to 600, 200 in each of the three quarters. It actually was 202 in the spring and the summer, and it was 200 in the fall.
Lodging tax, what, $12?
The lodging is 12%. That is, the TOT tax is 12%.
Oh, okay.
So, if you pay $100 for a hotel room, you pay $12, it goes directly to the city. That's why people love hotels, because TOT tax is a local-generated tax. You don't have to go to the state and come back and get only 1%.
Yeah.
We don't have a state lodging tax here, we only have locally-enabled taxes, lodging taxes in California, which is good news. They can't take it from us, like some other taxes they want to get their hands into. They get plenty. We actually have a calculation, they didn't show it. We do have the estimate of taxes here that also go to the state. So, if you need some ammunition, Mr. Messer, you will give it to you.
Great. Are there any other questions? If not, thank you very much.
Well, thank you for your attention, I appreciate it, and your support of tourism, and we'll be back with part two in a month or two. Great, thank you very much.
All right, so, thinking back to Judy and the word older, now I have to remember what Jordan told me to push on here.
Okay, I wanted to start off by showing you just a preview of a project we've just completed with the State of California.
So, I'll describe a little bit about what it is while Bob tries to help me get that loaded. The State of California, every year does a California 365, or this year they've dubbed it Dream 365 online.
Ever see those jetpacks run by a jet ski? It's called flyboarding. What's up? Look at the helicopters. Absolutely. Bob's my co-pilot. Something tells me it's going to be harder than it looks. How do you judge this sport? It is. Look at that. We've got to see that again. That was looking. Great. Boom.
So, I'm glad they didn't load the full episode on there, it would have been an even more difficult stream there. But Johnny Mosley, if you don't know him, is an Olympic athlete, world-renowned skateboarder, has a huge cult following of extreme athletes, and we were fortunate enough to have him be interested in the action flyboarding. The state became aware of that last year during Carolyn Bateta's visit. She heard that that was about to go live, and so it stuck. Carolyn Bateta is the Director of Tourism for the state. And we are in season one, episode two of this year's Dream 365 show. That's a preview, that's the ad that's now running, to entice people, online ads, to entice people to view the show. It will go live in about another week, but I actually, just today, I got the full episode. I now have the full episode related to Catalina. And, so, many, many people here in the audience tonight, and I know you, Councilmember Olson, attended our annual marketing summit, and this year, from that, we developed a strategic plan, and we created Five Personas, we're calling them, which are guiding how we're going to place media, the PR efforts we're going to make, the content for our website, and so on, and we're going to keep circling back to these core focus areas, and we based a lot of why we chose those on the first two sample results, which were then complete from Lauren Schlow on the demographics. So, that informed a lot of the conversation about their likes and dislikes, and we believe there's some opportunities for seasonality here, that our later capacity study is going to help marry all three of these things together of when we should best address. study is gonna help marry all three of these things together of when we should best address each of these. Because we don't have a huge budget, but if we know there's the proper season that we're most likely to leverage and find family travel at a certain time of year, we'll talk about that, so on, outdoor adventure and down the list. And so, just some examples of the things we've already done with families. We partnered again with the state this year and we did Catalina, which is an... It'll be ongoing, but we launched it just prior to spring break because it was a good time to talk about family travel. On the outdoor adventure side, we're adding content almost daily to the website regarding our trails and camping and a lot of the new activities that are being invested in in that regard. With millennials, we're talking about our app, text alerts, the need for... And internally, talking about the need for enhanced Wi-Fi, as unwittingly just perhaps demonstrated there when we had attempted to download that on the island. So, we'll move forward on that. With couples, obviously, Island of Romance is not tired by any means. We still manage to leverage that all the time. This year, we've seen a big uptick in the number of wedding opportunities. But we also address couples, probably in the fall, with the empty nesters. Once people are... Once kids are back in school, that's another opportunity to really talk to couples. Arts and cultural travelers, we're taking full advantage of the Chihuli exhibit and before that Doug Aitken. Obviously, we continue to talk about things like the Film Festival, the Silent Film Fest, jazz tracks to attract arts and cultural visitors. And then finally, on the groups' side, we're primarily talking to meeting planners, event makers and corporate retreats. So, on the website, I gave a moment of foreshadowing to that. We launched the website a year ago, about this week, probably a year ago next week. And so, we've almost got a full 365 days under our belt of traffic. And on a year-to-date, this is calendar year-to-date because we were still adding pages and adding content. So, I felt that was a good, safe set of facts to give you. Traffic year-to-date, we're at about 500,000 user sessions. And this is what I alluded to. 77%, at least in that first quarter, were brand-new to the site, whereas 33% were returning. And that means that in the first quarter, we had between 100,000 and 140,000 unique visitors to the site per month. Mobile has been growing. I've told you that on each of my previous visits, and that was a big part of our motivator for redesigning and relaunching the site. For the entire first quarter, it was a solid 51% of users of our website were on a mobile device. Again, importance of bandwidth and wireless. Demographics. For the first quarter, we skewed heavily male and so 60% were male. That's gonna be an interesting one to keep watching. I know that we do have a lot of sports activities, waterborne activities, people like Johnny Mosley, the skateboard races and everything. So, it'd be an interesting one to watch that needle and see if that changes a little more over the course of the year. Because we know statistically that, at least last time I heard it from the state, I think it was 80% of travel-making decisions were leveraged by a female. Yeah. So, that could be an opportunity or something to really watch and point out there. I think probably ever since the Up For Whatever event, we've skewed a little bit younger, but I was still surprised to see that our top group using the website in the first quarter were aged 25 to 34. And that was at over 90,000 sessions. Our second-biggest group was 35 to 44 at over 66,000 sessions. Much like was just alluded to, California makes up the majority of those user sessions, 336,000 plus. Texas is currently number two at 15,000, Arizona at 14,500. Canada trailing dramatically as our largest international, 5,000. And the current economy is probably not gonna drive that number up for a long time. Canadians are holding back on visits to the US these days. And the UK in the second position for international. Oh, come on. Okay. Don't know what that was, but it's back. On the other side of having a website, you know, Google likes to play games and change algorithms all the time. And they did it again right around the time that we launched our site. So, we're investing a lot of effort, a lot of money into growing our SEO or search engine optimization. Among the ways we're doing that is we've launched a blog. And we're really promoting predominantly now on our site, our digital guide. And in general, we're seeing that the number-one browser that's being used visiting our site is Safari. So, we're looking at terms that really work in that environment in particular. Our banner ad program and our e-newsletters and our July 4 sponsorship packages are all going to be emailed out this week. So, we're going forward on a whole new round of those. We've simplified those packages and made them, we think, even more responsive in an SEO environment as well. And we've put a lot of effort into the groups and RFPs. Last year, we added the form, like we have on groups page on our website, to the weddings page. And I think that's a big reason why we've driven a lot more wedding interest, at least through our site, to the island. Our goal with the blog is to start posting two times per month. We've just written a six-month calendar where we outlined all of those and what they will be. And the digital guide, at least again in the first quarter, outpaced the online requests for a print guide for the first time. The digital guide was at 631 downloads, whereas requests on our own website for print guides was 567. But remember, we have lots of other places for people to request a guide, TripAdvisor, GoCalifornia and so on. I'm only counting those requests made on our site. Some of the recent advertising and PR, and I put two magazines up there when you guys have a chance to pass them around to see two of our most recent placements. Because of the Chihuli exhibit, we did an ad in conjunction with the museum and Southwest Magazine. That's the in-flight magazine for Southwest. I don't have a copy of it yet. Sunset Magazine is marked there for you to see, an ad that's adjacent to a lot of other California-area content. Just showed you the preview of the California 365, or this year they named it Dream 365 TV. We've recently hosted Univision, which helped us with a millennial, back to those groups, and also a foreign-language audience that we can certainly enjoy having here. Locations Magazine is the really large-format magazine that's there. That was a free placement, a good luck stroke. They invited up to five submissions per destination and up to their choice, and they picked one of ours. So, that was a freebie. And that talks to the film industry, so that talks to the groups conversation that we were talking about. And we've also recently hosted quite a few media, including some family travel writers and another writer who also has, we hope, future placement on Fox News. Some of the upcoming activities that we've got planned for the next month or so, I've been invited to make a couple of yacht club presentations and I'm working with our harbor department and with Two Harbors and a variety of other entities to make sure that we have all the information that someone arriving here by boat is most inclined to want, to know and need. We are looking at rewriting the film handbook. Some of you may or may not know that Donna Harris, our former Director of Marketing, was our film liaison. One of the changes we made when she left was that I took over those duties. And we added a whole lot of sales duties to our new Director of Sales and Marketing. So, now that I'm living with the handbook, I'm seeing some things that I really think we need to add language, drones being an example. They've become a commonplace tool used for filming. There's a lot of requirements that we want to make sure we outline, just so that we're not caught off guard by that. And along the idea of film, I just wanted to share, although I can't name names right now, we have three major TV shoots in the works. One as early as the second week in June for an online service, two for cable, and there's even one potential network show, but that'll just be a single broadcast for sure. That wouldn't be recurring episodes. The others offer us opportunities for recurring episodes. In all cases, there are relatively light potential impact on our infrastructure, but a lot of potential room nights because they're crew-heavy. So, that's kind of what we want to see. Some of the upcoming events, we are hosting our Tourism Month Mixer this week on May 18th. It'll be on the Green Peers, so please join us. Our official start time is 6:00 PM, but you can come as early as 5:00 PM. And the Island Company will be giving free rides on their new boat if you come early. So, that's a chance to do that. Google Trecker, you've heard me talk about it all year long, and they still hadn't launched the images, and they still hadn't launched the images. I have an email Saturday saying that they're uploading the first of our trail images as we speak, and by the end of the month, they will have those optimized, so they will be indexable and findable. So, that's gonna be a huge advantage for those outdoor adventure seekers that we're looking for. And we did all the streets in town, too. So, no longer will everyone pin at the post office when you actually look for walking directions to a business here. It will start to be corrected now as those all come online. We're continuing to work on our annual Restaurant Week. That information will be coming out any day. We are working in partnership with the Island Company to host SITE, S-I-T-E, which is the Society for Incentive Travel Excellence, the Southern California chapter. So, those are meeting planners. So, that's targeting that group's audience. They'll be here next month. We're continuing to evolve and redefine our concert series, working with the Outrigger Association for the second year on doing a larger-themed series of events while they're here. And we'll be hosting our annual meeting July 20th. I can't give you location certain, but I can tell you time certain, it's 6:00 PM. We have been awarded the opportunity to host Visit California for their Fall Board Meeting. That will be October 25th here on the island at Catherine's Terrace. And we're working with Meeting Planners International, Southern California Chapter, to host a large-group visit next year. And with that, I have nothing else for right now. There's lots of other stuff we're doing. I tried to keep it fairly light and bigger type tonight. I learned my lesson last time.
That was great. Are there any questions of the council? And the audience have any questions? Well, thank you.
All right. And I failed with a reminder handwritten on my... To acknowledge some of the board members and staff that are in the room. Julie Bovee is our current chair. Tony Budrevich representing the Conservancy. Jason Paray representing the hospital. Kathy Miller is our Director of Sales and Marketing. Give it and find my glasses. Okay. Forgive me if I'm missing another board member. I don't see any on that side. Oh, and of course, the city manager holds a seat on our board and has been a great participant this year, too. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, announcements.
I have two I'd love to give.
Okay.
The first one is this weekend, the Avalon High School Theater will be presenting the musical Chitty Chitty Bang Bang Friday and Saturday night at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 2:00 PM. Will be held at the Avalon High School Performing Arts Center, I like to call it. And also, I'm gonna read this since it's more information than I could have digested. Relay for Life, which is sponsored by the American Cancer Society, is just over two weeks from now, on Saturday, June 4th. The 12-hour Relay event will take place this year down on Front Street. Last year and the year before, it was up at the Joe Machado Field, but this year it will be on Front Street from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM to help fight against cancer. Teams will be fundraising all day with booths around the Reglee Stage. Walking is open to anyone. It is not too late to get a team together to participate in this year's event. Bring the family and spend the day giving to a worthy cause. The American Cancer Society provides support through treatment assistance, housing, transportation to and from appointments and more to those battling cancer, including Avalon residents. For more information, you can email relayforlifecatalina@gmail.com or you can call Lisa Lavelle at 562-304-3709.
Anything, Councilmember?
Oh, I just did announcements. I didn't do council reports.
Oh, yeah, they do. That's right. That threw me off. Okay. Are there any written communications?
We have communications on items that are on the agenda. They will be presented at that time of the agenda, Madam Mayor. Item's on the agenda.
Okay. City manager report?
I have one report. Tomorrow, Bob Greenlaw, the Director of Public Works, myself and his staff will be meeting with John Gray of the Federal Emergency Management Agency and with teams from CALOES, Office of Emergency Services, will be discussing impacts of the January storms. And they will also be looking at issues on Pebbley Beach Road and what opportunities there might be for us to look at the road and the cliff area as an opportunity to make that more secure.
City attorney report?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Council reports?
I just have one item. Curious where we are with the budget. We're about six weeks away from the end of the fiscal year and we haven't actually... We don't have any budget study sessions.
That's... You were correct. We have a conversation with the Finance Director. We have some communication today. We'll have a schedule out for you this week.
Okay. So, we're still on track for adopting a budget before the end of the fiscal year?
In my opinion, we're pushing, but we're going... That is our goal.
Okay, great.
I think last year you adopted it at the middle of the month. I suspect that, I think it was June 15th. Oh, no, no. You actually adopted, I believe. Well, June, maybe it was the first meeting in July. And our hope is that we can do that, the same for you. We need to meet with department directors. We're gonna look at a zero-basing. The budgets, that is all that's in the budget, we will ask for their help in relooking at that, rather than just building on an existing budget and saying, well, it was this amount last year and it's gonna be 2% more this year. So, that'll be a good opportunity for all of us to go through that process. And I'm looking forward to that opportunity with the director and the directors. Thank you.
What did you say, there's six weeks left?
In the fiscal year.
In the fiscal year. So, remember we had budget study sessions?
Yes.
And then we prepped up.
Like fee study schedules. When we studied the fees and took a couple hours to study that. We took it in pieces. You're right.
Okay, so, how many did we have last time? Because we gotta prepare for that and...
Yeah, I don't...
I think it was like two or three is what we had.
Yeah, you should have the time to review the budget with adequate time. Now, we have data, financial data, that was essential in putting a new budget together. You're interested, as we are, in ending balances, what we project, what projected revenue will be in the future year, what kinds of costs. We know that there are some increases in costs in areas of retirement. And so, we need to give you, after we put it, we need to give you enough time, as you're suggesting, Councilmember, that you can review it and also get public input on it. So, we need to put that schedule out. We will this week.
And at what point do we put in our two cents and things that we may want? Do we provide those with some, so that the Finance Director can put that in?
What I would ask you to do is if you had items, some of you in the past have communicated some issues I know that you're interested in. If you would communicate those, provide a copy to the Finance Director and to me. What we can do then is cost out what those are, so you'll know what the cost or impacts are on a... If it's a one-time or if it's an ongoing cost. And that would be very helpful to know what your concern is, in the end, it's your budget.
Right. Okay, thank you. Councilman Sampson?
Yes, I do have a few things. I'd just like to ask, do we have any input from Vons yet about the windows and will they... Okay, great.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember.
Yeah, the windows and then just some kind of an idea of what they're thinking.
I have an update, but it's not necessarily very substantial. I heard from Vons today that they were hoping to get the report from their windows consultant as to what the full body of work would be. They had hoped to have that report yesterday and they still have not received it. So, as soon as they get that report in, they will let us know.
Was that from Sam Schink?
Sam Schink from Vons, yes.
Does Jenna Wilkinson still work for them now?
I have not had any communication from Jenna, so I don't know if she's still with the company. I've been hearing from Sam and Tony.
I have... Her last email, when I sent it, returned that she would be back in the office on March 17th. So, I'm... I don't know how to read that.
I'm very... I'm just blown away at what seems like the incompleteness of this company. I mean, they're huge. It's Cerberus. It's enormous. Their finances are endless, you know? We like a new facility, but you know? We like a new facility, but, you know, I, I just, I can't make them put a store in. And I think they're running into their deadline pretty quick here because they're already a month and a half behind schedule, so, I mean, a year and a half behind schedule. So they're, you know, they're not looking good. So I hope they get back to us. I hope they actually show up to a city council meeting someday and actually let people ask some, a few questions, maybe give us a half an hour of question and answer, so we can get an idea of what their intentions are and how competent that this new staff is to put in such a large facility in the middle of our city. Because it's getting to be where I'm really questioning that, that whole, that whole premise. You know, I don't, I think they bit off more than they can chew, is what I'm saying. The next thing I'd like to ask you is how, I'm understanding that our Harbor Master is retiring. Is there going to be a new position available and open?
Yes.
And when does that start? Does it, are you taking?
It has started.
Have you taken applications for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Have you gotten any applications?
Yes, sir. We, we're, it says, it's, it's been advertised, excuse me, opened until filled. We have in the first round, which will, well, it'll be, actually, today is the, we'll look at, we have 19 applications.
Okay.
And our harbor, as you, as you well know, our harbor is, is not just an ordinary harbor. It's a, it's a complicated, because of the nature of all the business that transacts, passengers, boaters, all of that. So it's, so we, you really need some, someone who's experienced. We'll use a panel of, of, quote, experts, Harbor Masters in, in, in areas as a technical panel. And, and then the goal is to recruit that as quickly as possible and get the best person who might, who is available to, for that job.
Yeah. And familiar with Catalina as well.
Did you say that there was no closing date on applications?
It's actually, it's called, open is filled, so in the event that we don't get a, in the first sense, we don't get sufficient or adequate applicants, that we can continue recruiting without going back out again with a re-recruitment.
Okay.
Thank you for the question, though, Councilmember.
I just want to say, I had a great time at the skateboard, the downhill skateboard competition. That was awesome. And also, the bike exhibition. Those guys were absolutely insane, and that was just in a good way. Monster energy, put on a good show. And thank you for providing that monster support from Lavent, I believe, Alcibi, from Catalina Beverage. Okay, so the next thing I want to get to is, I want to let the people that elected me into office, give them a heads up on this car and gas tax that has been implemented in California by Governor Jerry Brown. I think it's, it's insane. I think it's absurd, and I think it's way over the top. Carl DeMaio, Congressman, I believe, from San Diego, 29th District, has started a repeal the car and gas tax legislation, and it's, first you have to see, we've got to get 300, over 300, 300,000 signatures. And you can go to www.repealcargastax.com. In order to sign up for that, you can donate $5 if you like and get this thing going. So what I'm, what I'm understanding is that it's, it's just unsustainable for the regular Joe out there. Apparently, your, your registration can go up as much as $300 a year, possibly 100. And gas will definitely go up, and we already pay the highest gas tax in the United States. It's just over the top. And, and also, I want to add that I've already understood that 40% of the revenue that's going to be collected for that has already been diverted to another area. So there's no way your traffic, when you go to the mainland, the traffic's not going to get better. Nothing's going to get better. If $136 billion a year is not enough for the people in Sacramento, it, nothing, not, nothing will ever be enough. Since Jerry Brown has been in office, the budget in, in California has gone up from 80, roughly $80 million to 100, $80 billion to $136 billion. So that's an increase of almost 40% in 10 years. And it took us, as long as California has been a state, to get to $80 billion. So in 10 years, it's, it's, it's just unsustainable. So I urge you all to please repeal the car and gas tax. It's not right. And you can go ahead and write your Senator and Congressman as well and let them know that their support to repeal it and, and to deny it and to go backwards on this is, would be greatly appreciated. My last announcement would be towards the Scions in town. We thought we were doing the community a favor when we added Scions. We let people have a Scion because they can go into the interior where golf carts cannot. Unfortunately, people are just going too fast, and they're parking in places they're not supposed to. It's my understanding that the vehicle code, the vehicle officer that, and at the front desk at the City Hall lets everybody know, you can park here, but you can't park here. When you get one of these vehicles, there's certain areas designated for golf carts that these vehicles are too wide to park in. So basically, you make it really difficult when you park in these slots down by where Vons is, and there's a few other places in town for people with golf carts to get in and out of their vehicles. Some people may say that's a problem. Other people may say it's not. My constituents, especially a lot of the older people, say it's a problem. And so I want to say, and also the speeding, I've had a few people let me know that there's been some close calls in town because these cars go as fast as you can, you can go on a freeway. And golf carts, so we're going from 18 miles an hour tops on a golf cart to a car that can go 60 miles an hour. If you want to go 60 miles an hour, go over on the freeway. And you're going to be going too slow, but anyway, it's, it's just too fast for here. 18 miles an hour is plenty of speed. You're not going to go, get anywhere faster than when you go 5 miles an hour because you're going to have to stop at the next stop sign, just like everybody else does. So please be careful. Put your kids in car seats if you can. We don't have a speed, really, I think we have a speed limit, which is 20 or something, 20 miles an hour.
State law actually sets a minimum speed limit in, depending upon areas, and then you can reduce the speed. The city can set the speed at what it believes it should be. If you use radar, of course, it has to be-
Maximum speed limit?
Yeah.
No, what's the maximum speed limit?
On in-
20? Probably 20. If it's 20, it's too fast. I mean, but it's fast enough to where, you got to use your common sense. You're not going to get anywhere all that fast in town. So there's been some close calls. What I've heard is a car came to a skidding stop and nearly missed a kid walking across the street out by Avalony Point. So we just need to be more careful, that's all. And I would appreciate that because if people aren't more careful and they keep going fast and they keep getting complaints about the Scions and the, and the larger cars and the cars that are capable of going faster, well, then we'll just repeal that, and we'll let everybody know that way that it's not a good idea, that you haul ass around town and scare people and aren't safe. So health, safety, and welfare are very important part of our community and part of our quality of life. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Protonalson?
About Mr. Sampson's last point, doesn't the code define where the Scions can park? So doesn't code enforcement have the ability to take it, signs that are improperly parked?
I would have to, you have to have it marked, and I think there were temporary signs up. I don't know the permanent signs, but you're correct that we have to have it posted in order to cite.
We should probably post it then because I don't think the areas are marked. But it was very well understood that these vehicles, we're adding them into an area that has already been designated, into a community that's already had designated parking for certain types of vehicles.
As Councilmember Sampson said, Mayor Proton, what vehicle registration is now doing is for each, anybody that comes in now, they're getting, they're saying, here's what you can, where, here and where you, where you can park the vehicle, but the more effective is to post so that to make certain that we can cite. Or, or, well, it'll let the public know where not to park, and if they do park there, then the city has the ability to cite.
We're getting close to our summertime, and I've noticed we still have a bunch of kayaks up against the fence down on South Beach. We have the rack, but then we also have freestanding kayaks-
Okay.
-that would have stuck the view of the beautiful bay from people reclining on the beach.
Okay.
Those are my two little bad things. Not the good things. Last weekend, I was at Indian Wells at the Contract Cities Annual Meeting. Contract Cities is cities that contract with LA County Fire, LA County Sheriffs, other people. We will contract with the, with the sheriffs, so remember that. And we had such exciting things to talk about was Measure M, which was the transit tax. There was a good presentation by a couple of finance guys, one from North Hollywood, West Hollywood, one from LA, about some software packages that they've developed for budgeting. And they're going to, actually, we're going to steal them from them, give them to Bob. They talked about, one of the things that's going to hit us is that the, our sheriff's contract gets hit with a surcharge for the liability trust fund, and that's going up this year. So we're going to have to put some more money into that.
10%, yeah, it's about 10,000. Or, yeah, about $10,000 a month. 9,000 something, 500 or something.
Kind of a pain. There's a, there's a liability trust fund for everybody that contracts with LA County sheriffs.
Right.
There's a fund that's out there. So every time one of our contracted sheriff's deputies gets sued for something, it comes not out of the county's money, it comes out of this trust fund. And so because of some actions in the past, the trust, trust fund's been depleted, so they have to increase, we have to increase our contribution to that to get it back.
What is it going to be, 10,000?
It's about, it's about 9,000-
Per month?
Per month, yes.
So we're going to be paying not 120,000, but 130,000 now?
Yeah, 10% of our contract.
It, it, it is an issue, it is an issue to look at. While what we do is we pool, they, they pool the funds, and one might say that crime, of course, anywhere is not good, but crime in Avalon is quite different than crime is elsewhere in Los Angeles County. And so the risks are not as, I feel like knocking on wood because I'm a little superstitious, but the risks are not the same. So there, there certainly could be a conversation about that with, with, with the Sheriff's Department, who I, who I know would have a conversation on that, on the topic of, you know, the reasons for why it's 10% on, on the contracts.
Yeah, it would be interesting, the breakdown by departments and how that happens because some departments in the county are much more in the news than others.
Yes.
And, yeah.
But the liability trust fund committee kind of looks at everybody equally.
Yeah.
It's not set by the sheriffs, it's by, there's a committee that sets it.
Yeah, yeah, well, and, and I, I think that would be an interesting, just to look at that. And clearly, where you're in communities with high risk, they should be paying more just as your people who are, there's an argument that you could make, and if the council wishes, we could at least have a civilized discussion about that with the Sheriff's Department.
That was the first day. The second day, we're talking about marijuana. They're talking about the business side of it, but what's more important, I think, for the city is how we handle our employees that will be legally able to use marijuana, both pre-hiring and while they're working here. And they're working on some guidelines. The important thing is to make sure that you don't drug test till you make the final offer of jobs, because you can't use a drug test as an excuse per se.
Okay.
Then they talked about pensions again, which is a very scary thing. And then you should think about going to this. There's this good city, city manager meeting with-
If my, if my bosses would let me go get away, I would be, I would enjoy that. Thank you, sir.
There was a good 90-minute session. The week before, where you were, we're at SCAG, which is the Southern California Association of Governments, which is the largest regional, regional group of city governments, both in counties and cities, they got together, represented about 190. It's a lot of money available for planning purposes for us. They do a very good, they did a profile of Catalina, of Avalon. It's a very nice publication, except there's some flaws in it that we're aware of.
I'd rather have that outfit that Jim hired do it than what you've got in there.
Yeah. But it was, it was informative times that we spent, and it's scary to be up here. You know, it really is. It's, but we made it back safely. So I have, I have collected some information for some of our department heads that I will pass out after we get done with the meeting. And I think I'm done.
And I would just like to kind of ride on the coattails of Councilman Sampson on the Scions and all vehicles. I don't know what can be done from a law enforcement perspective because it's not just the Scions on Pebbley Beach Road. It's everybody. You've got big vehicles passing, other vehicles, and, and yes, we've just been blessed without having things. But I don't know if you could, I don't want to call it a sting, but, and I know it's hard to, you know, with the radar guns, and it's a little different thing, but at least to kind of hang out by where you're talking at Lever's Cove, where that bench is and all of that, where those kids or people are crossing the street, just to see how they whip around the corner, maybe stop a few people and say, slower down, you know, just some awareness might be nice.
I think it would be a good idea to talk about it further in our transportation study session because there are those temporary structures that are solar-powered, that flash at you when you're going above. And I think even if we were to do that for a period of time, it would, you know, maybe start to slow it down. My other recommendation in the transportation session was going to be speed humps.
Yeah.
Because that will also slow down traffic.
I like the flashing thing.
Undulation.
Speed bumps. Yeah.
Undulation.
Undulation. Yeah. No, those poor guys going, yeah. Ranger says this guy's going out in an ambulance, not, not be a good thing to go, boom. And there's clever things out there, I'm sure.
Will they do it in the crossroads between Bacon and Catalina right now?
And May is National Foster and Adoption Month. I would like us to get the information and put it on the website. There are, in LA County right now, there are 400 children that are up for adoption, and that is an alternative to child, natural childbirth. So we will put that information, and if anybody's interested, the office is located in Lakewood, so it's something that would be easy to, to get in touch with. I'm happy to report, I was just appointed to the Southern California Association of Government Committee on Economic, Community Economic and Human Resources Development Committee, so I look forward to bringing back information in the future. And I went to the COG meeting. Cindy had another obligation, and I went there. There was also a discussion about Measure M. And in that formula for that money, and I think some of us weren't in support of it because it was only $100,000 for the city of Avalon. So, but the draft regulations for that are, need to be responded to by May 25th, and I don't know if there was somebody in the department that kind of looked at that.
Yes.
Okay. And I went to, and I'm sure others showed up at the Marine Animal Rescue Open House on Saturday with John Council. It was very well received, and we look forward to, it's an exceptional exhibit. So if you haven't been out there, I really suggest you go and give them your support. And that's it. Okay. Oral communications. This is an opportunity for people in the community to speak on an item that is not in the agenda. Be limited to three minutes, and no action will be taken.
Good evening, Mayor Marshall, city council members. I'm up here today to talk about housing because I attended the Planning Commission meeting last month, and I think that if you didn't have an opportunity to watch that meeting, it would be important to do so. Two years ago, the city council approved an amendment to our planning code, consistent with state law, to the extent that state law said you need to think about transitional housing, such as emergency shelters, single-room occupancy. And so we modified our planning code to allow for zoning for these, but I don't know that the city council understood how it was going to be implemented by our biggest employer. And this is what the Planning Commission was presented with. Housing that had been used for a family, two families, actually, in Tremont, there are now four bedrooms that are 190 square feet each that will hold two people who may not even necessarily know each other or the other people living there. They're going to share a 10-by-20 room as their common area. In their kitchen, there are eight refrigerators, like a college kid would get with a lock on it. That's what they get. There was one full bath and a half bath. I'm the person that pointed out that didn't comply with the code. And the representative from the Island Company actually argued, well, we thought that it'd be okay if we had another room with a sink and a toilet. Is this really how we want our residents to live? That we're going to destroy family housing in favor of having temporary people because I can't believe that someone, we would expect somebody who is a worker here, year after year, is going to live in those kind of conditions. You're certainly not going to raise a family, you're not going to make roots in this family, you're not going to feel like a member of the community. And the other thing that's particularly bothersome to me is that all of this housing has already been done like this. of this housing has already been done like this. If you go up to Monkey Town, it looks like that. The Tremont places have already been done like that. And now they're going back and trying to slide it into the single room occupancy ordinance. And the other thing that's bothersome is, this kind of housing is being built for people who are coming over on student worker visas and J-11 or J-1 visas, which are foreign kids who come with their own health insurance, who are not, the island company doesn't have to pay their social security, their Medicare, their unemployment insurance. They're a way less expensive employee than it is for local kids. So I'm the first to recognize, our school has gone down from 750 kids to 600. And we should all think about how that's happening and eroding a community too. But this particularly is kind of a concern to me, and I'm hoping that it's on your radar and that you'll think about it. And then the other thing, again, on housing, was that I understand that Councilman Olson did the island company a favor by putting together a meeting with the city manager and the planning director. I understand that you were there, Councilman, at the meeting with the representatives from the city council, to talk about how the city's four and a half million housing dollars are going to be spent. You own property. You entered into an exclusive negotiating agreement with a nonprofit to look at housing opportunities, but nothing's come of that. I mean, have you seen any reports? Have you had any discussions about it? No. So I just feel like you have opportunities that are being taken advantage of. And that's not fair to the residents and the people of this town.
Madam Mayor, may I just, I think the issue of SROs, I also think it needs to be carefully looked at in terms of what does the general plan say, and what are our policies? And the question becomes, when you change from a single family to a multifamily, to a dorm, what are the impacts? And is that, is there a consistency? I understand that there may be some contradictory language in our general plan that allows that. But I think it's, it is an issue that we need to look at. In terms of the affordable housing that I, and I appreciate Ms. Albert's raising the issue about affordable housing, that CNC is supposed to have next week, the, a design cost estimate to develop affordable housing, 40 units or so. And I will assure you, you know, things are sometimes said that, that they hear from other people, but there was no commitment made by Mr. Olson or any of us to use city money to do anything, sort of RDA money or housing set aside money to do anything, to, to, to give away that. We didn't have that authority. What we did mostly was listen and try to understand what was being proposed at the Las Casitas site, this site here. And so we were, but we're very conscious of the fact that housing is a critical issue, as water was. Now that the water is under the bridge, if you will, a little bit, or not yet, but we're moving that way, then housing is the, is the next focus. And I appreciate the focus that the community has and you have on coming up with some realistic things. If we can get private employers to build housing on terms that are, that are reasonable to the city, to the taxpayer, and us, that's good. The city also is looking, you are, their housing authority is looking at building or encouraging the building of affordable housing. That's good, too. They just have to be under, all under the right terms. It's fair to the public and fair to the, to the, to the community.
I know we can't take action on these items, but they're spoken about. But is there, is there any movement that we can make on, on the money that we have for housing, with the housing that we have? Because it's my understanding that every year we wait, that $4 million gets to be less money. It buys less.
And that's.
And we're waiting for a few years now already. So can we move on this, please?
Yes. Well, the, what you instructed in the exclusive negotiating agreement is for them in 90 days after the agreement to come back with plans that would leverage the money that you have with federal tax credits. So that $4 million or $5 million might become $25 million. And that's what CNC is, is, will be coming. They promised next week to have a plan for developing one site. And they've identified some other sites that, that are, where you might build 40 or 30 or 40, 40 to 45 units. And we're still waiting, as the community is.
So regardless of what the island company is proposing, we are working independently.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's what I want to know. And I know, I believe, okay, that's all I want to say. I don't want to get into something where it's a conflict of interest. So, but we might be able to be more transparent when we start speaking about our housing too, when we have closed session items correctly. I mean, if we all agree that that's something that we can speak candid.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. All right.
Thank you for the questions.
Thank you, Pam. That's great. Let me, Ms. Albert?
Allison Osensky, 356 Sumner, brought up something, Mr. Olson. As you may have noticed, I know I bugged you for about five years to build kayak racks. And one rack was built, Phil did a real good job. But we need five more. There's 40 kayaks sitting down on the beach. There's no place to put them. So we need some more kayak racks. So that's the first thing I would ask, is that you increase the number so it meets the need. Second, same thing about the dock carts. I'm going to bring it up one more time. But I just wanted to let you know, I found examples of prices for dock carts. And since we just discovered that the more boats are generating $14 million worth of revenue for the city, I don't think it would kill us to spend a couple thousand dollars on dock carts. I also called Two Harbors to ask them where they got their dock carts from. They said they've had them for so long, they don't remember where they got them from, but they think they built them themselves. So tomorrow, when I go up there, I'm going to get the measurements and get pictures, and maybe we can build them ourselves, and that'll even cut the cost. Another item, has anybody, again, looked into having citywide Wi-Fi? I know we've discussed this a few times. I called Beacon Wi-Fi, who does the marinas in San Diego. And they said that, yes, it's an amenity, it's free to all boaters, the marinas pay a small fee every month, and that on average, they can handle about 5,000 people a day. So that's, you know, about the size of our city. I think maybe looking into this would be helpful. I know a lot of us are paying $30 and $40 for Wi-Fi. It'd be nice if we had a citywide system that worked everywhere. Didn't matter if you were sitting in your house, you were sitting out by the library, if everybody could sign on, that would be nice. And even if we had to pay a small fee, I think would be a service to everyone here.
I can answer if I, do you mind if I, on the Wi-Fi, there was a meeting that was recently held with the, with Catalina, with the cable broadband. We had our IT specialist, Patrick Grady, there. I was there, Jim Malujoan was there. And we talked about the system and about upgrades that they're contemplating, or that they're, or that need to be made. And there's supposed to be some information coming back, because we recognize, as you do, that there, there is some issues with our bandwidth and, and the ability to maintain the, the ability to have a good Wi-Fi system. The question of free system, we haven't yet looked at. Because as you know, as you said, as you pointed out too, there's, there's really nothing free. It's just, there's, there is a question about who pays. And, but certainly in terms of tourism, in terms of local community, having a better Wi-Fi system is something that we are very interested in. We are talking with the people now who are contracted to provide the service, to see what can be done to upgrade that system. So that's, that is a current issue.
Good. Still being looked into. If I can sneak one more thing in. Has anybody made any progress on looking at providing like a cars-to-go system? I know we've asked about this before numerous times too. But having a short-term rental system, so everybody doesn't have to have a large car. If you could rent a car for an hour to go pick something up, or you could rent it for the weekend to go camping, or you can rent it for the day to go to the interior. This would eliminate the need for everybody to have to have an 18-foot-long SUV.
And Allison, that is part of our, our transportation studies, that is in there.
Good.
Talking about options and how we could do something like that. So we are looking at.
Good.
All the possibilities for.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks very much.
Anybody else?
Mayor, council members, I'm going to assume this is the one shot to take at the dog ordinance, since it's on.
No, no.
It is not.
We're not there yet.
Okay, it's going to be pulled from the consent calendar.
Most likely, yes.
Okay. Well, I'm just reading here, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a specific item is removed from the consent calendar for further discussion and possible action. That's going to happen?
I will remove it.
I'll remove it, yeah.
Okay, talk to you later.
There you go.
Thanks, Bruce.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Quick update on the kayak rack. My understanding and talking to the harbor master, it is shortly to follow the opening of the field dock. There was a dock down there in the past for kayaks off of the field dock. That should go back in here fairly soon. Some of those kayaks that you see on the beach are, been given permission until that got back, put back in the water. And as soon as we do that, we'll push to get those back off the beach. We have a few people on the kayak rack now. They're bootlegging until that happens. We still have two or three spots available once that all gets cleaned up. So that should happen hopefully in the next week or two. And we'll get that out of the way. A couple of quick updates. Really excited about our summer programs. We just wrapped up a great spring basketball program. Just wrapped up a tumbling class and a cheer class, and kind of getting into summer mode. We're looking at a T-ball program starting up, a tumbling class starting up, cheer coming back, swim team starting, girls' fast pitch, a basketball youth and adult league starting, a volleyball league starting, swim lessons starting. And then we just came across our desk a week ago that ISIS, it looks like, lost their funding for their summer camp. And we're going to step in and take that on, starting July 5. So they'll have funding through the end of the fiscal year. Working with some of the staff that are there currently in ISIS. It'll be a fee-based program. We're going to keep it as inexpensive as possible. We're going out to some of the service organizations to try and find some additional funding and do some scholarships that way to even reduce some of those costs. So looking to get that off the ground here in the next, and paperwork out here in the next week or so.
Dan, I'm so sorry. I don't want to lose a train of thought. So let me interrupt you for a minute. The ISIS program is sponsored by Long Beach Unified School District, isn't it?
Correct.
Yeah, that, that's just not cool at all. Can we step in as a city and get involved in that? I mean, we, we get, Avalon School gets kicked to the curb on so many different avenues, that we need a place for some of our kids in our community to go in the summer, that the school should be the school district. We pay as, as much tax as everyone else, and you know, yet, yet the City of Avalon is paying for a field, for our kids to do all their sports activities. The City of Avalon, all of our nonprofits are paying for sports equipment, for all of this stuff that, you know, I'm, I got to draw the line here.
We'll have a conversation with the school. And as you know, under the law, in the California law, actually, there, you have to treat equally all components of your school district. So Mr. Honke and I, and we can, we, we'll engage the school on that issue.
Thank you.
Yeah, because the first question is, is everybody cut?
Yeah.
You know, and then, and because there was a brief conversation about them trying to give us maybe some funding, but, but they're not going to attach any money to this little agreement?
We just had some parents come to us saying, you know, what can you do? It looks like their funding has been lost. We talked to the staff up there, and you know, they're letting their staff know that it's not going to be funded for the summer. So we certainly can be a fallback if we need to, and work with the city manager.
I think we should.
Reaching out there. June 3, and Relay for Life date is June 3. It was not June 4, it's a Saturday instead of a Sunday.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Did I have that date wrong?
The original date, I think, was a Sunday, and that's maybe what got shared, but it was changed to a Saturday. June 3, also, we're going to do Kids Day in the Bay, kind of kickoff our summer. We did an end of summer party last year. We want to kick it off for the local kids than any visitors are here at that time. But it's going to be 11 to 3 on South Beach. We're going to have a barbecue. We're going to do kayaking with the kids. We're going to do stand-up paddle, water polo games, relay races, you know, games with the kids. And then we're going to debut the, the Wibbits, the inflatables in the bay, and have that out that particular day. So we're looking forward to that. And then lastly, really excited about a community project, a community landscape project. It's with the Rotary, Cliff Hag, and a few of the Rotarians have been really involved. Rudy was at the very first meeting as well. But they were able to solicit $5,000 from Edison to do some planning on the Mall and then on Front Street, just as a beautification of the city. So it looks like, I got an email today, that Avalon Freight Services is going to step in. Doug Bombard is committed to bringing the plant material over. Linda and Cliff just had a two-day shopping spree and spent probably, spent $5,000, but probably $10,000 to $15,000 in plant material with some of Cliff's connections. So it's going to be June 8 and 9. It's going to be a Thursday, Friday. We're trying to keep it off a weekend. We're trying to keep it off cruise ship days. We're going to do some of, there's probably 30, 25 to 30 palm trees in various sizes going in. There'll be lots of succulents, lots of perennials going in. Some of the bigger stuff will be planted prior, and then a community day on the 8th and 9th, put the ground cover in, put succulents in. So more information to come about that.
Let me ask you a question. Did we not, I mean, this is a wonderful project. Did we not pay for someone to tell us, to do a kind of a re-landscaping and tell us the plants that should be in there? And the, didn't we?
That was before me, but I, I mean, you may have.
There was a, I think there's bits and pieces of a project that's out there. Kelly Parsons is the consultant that the city used to come in and do some initial, additional, initial work on the, on the project. It wasn't completed. The funding wasn't budgeted for. It's something I'm going to propose that, you know, we put in for, for next fiscal year to complete a citywide. In the meantime, we're looking for just a nice little pop going in the summer. We're hoping to hit 15 to 20 of the beds around town, and just really give them a nice little upgrade. And then come back behind and look at the parks and look at, you know, the city, citywide in regards to that.
Great. Excellent. Thank you, Rotary, too.
Hi, Jenny Hall, 334 Clarissa. I just wanted to go back to the housing shortage, if I may, for a moment, because I'm not sure that, I think what Pam might have been saying was, there's housing now that sits empty all year long, except for this summer month, the summer season. And then it is used by the visa crowd from whatever country. I don't know how that's going to be affected anymore, but it just seems like there would be teachers, hospital, other, you know, nine-month-a-year tenants that could possibly use some housing, only now it is already divided up? Is that what I'm understanding? So it's already in cubicles with a small cubic airspace? I'd like to say slave quarters, but that's probably not politically correct. But so you went on to decide about future housing, and what the city could build. But what about what has already just transpired?
Right.
From the planning commission's point of view, and last month, and, you know, why is Monkey Town sitting empty? Because that's, speaking from experience, that was a great middle-class place to live. And there were Warreners and Deacons and, you know, a lot of old names that just raised kids and families. So that's just a, I appreciate that.
Review, yeah.
Yeah, I'm afraid we're going from, from a good place to, where we're supposed to be going is affordable, dignified housing, and we're moving away from that. And we're allowing ourselves to move away from it. And it's kind of shameful. I feel like I'm, spotlight's on us now in this area. And we've got to do something about it. I mean, we can't tell, we can't make people do something with their housing that they don't want to do, but we can prevent it from getting worse than it is for the general public. And that's, and we're kind of moving away from that. I think we can, we can make a better effort.
I think that's where you need to look at the general plan, particularly the housing element, and look at the policies that guide what we do. And say, are those policies clear? Are they ones that support year-round housing for people who live here quality? Or, or can they be made, those policies be made better? Are there inconsistencies? And I am one who is of the opinion that there are some inconsistencies in the housing element. And what we really should do is to bring back to you and make sure that we understand, or make sure the, the general plan and the housing element does the things that you want it to do. Because in the end, we cannot do anything unless it's in that, unless it's permitted under the, under the housing element of the general plan. And, and I do believe that you probably need to take, that we need to take a look, or you need to direct us to take a look at that housing element, and see if it's achieving what you want it to achieve, and the community wants it to do.
And I guess my confusion is, because the SRO thing comes up all the time. And it's. something that isn't around us, and, I mean, that we deal with, but the Planning Commission does. And I guess, was something done wrong and we're now letting it slide? Or, I mean, that's where I'm very confused on all of that.
Again, what state law requires is that you allow SROs in a zone. You have to allow them in a zone. You cannot prohibit them. So you have to allow them somewhere in the city. And so the ordinance provides that in certain areas, they are allowed SROs, and then there's a CUP process whereby someone comes and asks for an entitlement for that allowed use, and then the city can put on conditions. So we can't ban them.
And it happened in that order?
Yes.
So, weren't they supposed to build something instead of just kicking people out of their house? They weren't supposed to build additional housing for their SROs?
No, no.
They weren't?
No.
They just kick people out and then remodel?
The ordinance doesn't, again, the ordinance provides, the ordinance says provide, does not say build.
It doesn't say build.
I would, and this is where, we're not going to disagree. We're just, we're just saying that I think this is where policies that are in both state law and the general plan may be somewhat inconsistent, because the state law and the general plan talks about preserving housing for all income groups. All income groups include single-family residences, and we're required under the law, state law, to make sure that our policies are consistent, and the city attorney's correct, that we're supposed to allow them. But the question is, is the mix that we're providing one that is what you want and what the community wants? And we, I think we really need to take a look at it.
And we will be when, so we're having the opportunity, the city's going to have the opportunity to decide how to spend the $4 million that you currently have. In addition to that, we'll be updating your housing ordinances and your inclusive housing ordinance, which will further define and deal with the issue of SROs, as well as the requirements of new development and what type of housing new development should provide. So we're already underway in working on that update.
And I'd just like to say a couple of things about the SROs. The new ordinance was something that was the first time we had ever implemented it. And I think we recognize that using that ordinance to build new housing is a different thing than using that ordinance to convert existing housing. And so I think in going forward, we may need to take another look at that ordinance and put some language in there where you can create SROs to provide the type of housing that SROs are intended for, but perhaps we don't want to use that ordinance to convert existing housing into something else. Because it's not, it's not accomplishing new housing.
Right, exactly.
And so I think that's an ordinance that we definitely need to rework.
You could do that. You just have to amend the ordinance.
But that was the point I was getting at.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for clarifying that. That was good. Okay, anybody else in the audience? Okay, let's go to the consent calendar.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Consent Calendar Item 1 is, it's recommended is to approve actions from the May 2nd, 2017 Regular City Council Meeting and the May 3rd Special City Council Meeting. And I believe Ms. Ratty provided that information to you electronically. Item 2, expenditures, the recommended action is to approve total expenditure amount of Item number 3 is to authorize a contract change order under the 2016 CIP for repaving of Bodega Road. This is the recommended action is to authorize a director public works to execute a contract change order not to exceed $100,000 under this 2016 CIP project for the repaving of the Bodega Road. And I will just mention briefly, say, the reason you have that money is because work that was going to be contracted out, he is doing it himself. So that's a savings that, because of his efforts. Item number 4 is consider the purchase of a finance software enhancements and training. This is a recommended action is to authorize the finance director to procure the Superioron Plus Fixed Asset Module Miscellaneous Billing Mode and related training per the attached quote for an amount not to exceed $9,230 and declare that it is a sole source purchase. Item number 5 is adopt an ordinance updating the Avalon Municipal Code to add procedures to identify, seize, and destroy potentially dangerous and vicious dogs and create a mandatory spay and neuter program for pit bulls. This is a second reading, and if approved, it would be a second reading adoption. You have already adopted an urgency ordinance of the same. Item number 6 is to adopt an ordinance authorizing the adoption of future new or increased saltwater sewer and solid waste service fees and charges by resolution as well as ordinance. And the recommended action is to adopt the ordinance authorizing the adoption of this, of new increased saltwater sewer solid waste fees and charges by resolution as a way, yeah, and that is the ordinance, is to allow you to do this by resolution, which cities do throughout California. And amend Section 67.252B of the Avalon Municipal Code to also authorize adoption of a newer increased solid waste fees as well by ordinance. Contract Amendment, item number 7, Verge's Snack Bar. Recommended action is to authorize city manager to enter into a contract amendment for Verge's Snack Bar lease to allow alcoholic beverages, beer and wine sales, with conditions. I understand that when Ms. Ratty put the report together, that there are conditions in her report. That concludes the consent. You would want to indicate what items you'd want pulled.
What items would we like pulled?
I'd like to pull abstain from the Chet's Hardware on item number 2 and poll for discussion, item number 5.
And number 7.
Number 7?
I would like to do 3, just a couple of questions.
Okay. I just want to ask a question on the saltwater fees. Is that's, that's what we have already decided on, and that's just to pay, that's just to break even, right? That's just, so the city's not taking money out of the general fund every year to pay for, to pay for the service?
Actually, no.
Is this something new?
This is just a, state law now allows cities, it changes the way cities can adopt fees. And so this is just being consistent with state law. There will be a separate hearing in, I'm going to say, June?
20th.
20th, where you're going to actually consider which fees you're going to be adopting, and the amount of those fees. So that's in a month from now.
Okay.
This just makes your municipal code consistent with new, new state law on how you adopt.
Okay, thank you.
And I just have a couple of finance, refinance questions instead of pulling them. And one is. Hi, Mr. Messer. One is, do we know how we're doing in line with our commuter subsidy and the amount of money we have? Are we, are we good through the end of June? Do we get money left over from that typically?
No, we're right on track. We're, we're usually spending a little bit more than what we receive.
Okay.
And we're on track to be the same way.
Okay. And then on the utilities breakdown, is it possible at some point to get an idea of, I guess I'm most interested in the electric bills, because I'm, because I'm kind of wanting us to kind of go solar, and I'm really curious every year how much we're spending on electricity? I don't know how big a nightmare that is to pull, but.
It would be a nightmare to pull historic, but we have worked with Edison, and we just started either this month or last month with being able to download the data electronically. That way, then we can start graphing and analyzing our consumption and our costs.
Okay.
So going forward from last month into the future, we'll be able to track that and identify any anomalies and places where we can save some costs.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, council, what's your pleasure?
Staff on 1, 2, 4, and 6.
Okay, staff on 1, 2, 4, and 6 is very second.
I'll second.
Let's call for the vote.
Those all eyes.
You did a good job.
With a note on the exception, on the, extension on the warrant.
Number 2, abstain? You abstain on number 2, right?
Just one item.
Okay.
One item on the warrant.
Item number 3.
Good evening.
Hi, Bob. My question would be, I just want to ask a question about the road. What does our, our part of the road start? Because I know there's Island Company pieces of property up into that area, correct?
So the road has a lot of different names over time, too. I think everybody considered it Cemetery Road, but on the deeds, it's Bodega Road.
It's on Bodega Road, correct.
So we was gifted to the city probably 20 years ago from Country Club, where that, the Y happens right at the Holiday Inn.
Right.
All the way down into the Corporation Yard.
Into the yard, to the warehouse area?
Uh-huh. We have approximately 17, 18 feet along that path.
Okay. And that's the main road or pavement? We're not going up towards?
We're attempting to pave the segment from where the expansion of the cemetery is, that downhill portion where we're getting that significant erosion down the ditches there. And on the heavy rainfall, it takes and places all that material from that ditch, from all those different little roads going in there, and stuffs it right into our drainage inlet and makes about a three-foot hump there. So, and then also, because of years of no maintenance on it, it's not doing very well with our brand-new vehicles. So it's not a real efficient roadway for our operations at the courtyard. Additionally, there's other leased properties that the Island Company owns, the industrial properties there. So we're trying to make it something that is efficient for all users and also controls that drainage from all those different industrial usage so that we can collect that drainage and put it into our interceptor. And as we do additional improvements to the Corporation Yard, make sure that we're putting impervious cover on those areas of Corporation Yard and then contain anything that would come off that site into where we treat it. So that's the ultimate plan there. This is the first step, because we have hot mix asphalt, and we also have a contractor that's going to be doing concrete swales in our contract. So those hot mix asphalt specialized crews, it's not available here where the contractors on the island. Hot mix asphalt gets barged over the day that we actually pave. So they can fit 14 truck and trailer loads on a barge at one shot. It has to stay 350 degrees. So it's kind of a hustle up when we're actually doing that. So very specialized work. We did receive very good prices for those two items with that contractor from the mainland.
Well, yeah, that was, I was trying to figure out a way with the Island Company having their property there, and a lot of the, when it rains, a lot of the debris comes down and it's going to be on our road.
And we did meet with Island Company representatives when we first were making sure we're determined ownership and seeing some of the possibilities for future paving, also looking at maybe with some other additional concrete so that we can address this problem. We're just trying to take some of the cost savings that we have from this contract right now, because I, myself, I took care of all the construction management, where we were going to have $75,000 in contract costs. So that helped contribute to this. And then we also downsized some items, but we're getting the same functional use of those items. So basically about $115,000 in savings, because, you know, where we'd like to take those savings and actually do something and make infrastructure improvements.
And how long, how long are we projecting this might take, once you get everything going?
Well, we're, we were anticipating doing the major paving on Casino Way. Right now, we're putting in the manholes there this week. We have a few conflicts with Edison facilities there, so that may delay it, you know, slightly a week or two. But once that hot mix comes on with those crews and they move on, so we're talking in a hurry here. That's why we brought this forward to you, so that we can take care of that opportunity since we found those funds and this opportunity to try and match that up and trying to do something good for the city.
Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you for working that out.
Saving us a lot of money.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
I've got to ask a question on the Edison Road that leaves up, leaves up to the Baker Tanks off Bodega Road.
Uh-huh.
How are we going to prevent all that material from coming down on our road?
So we're, once we get the concrete swale, and we'll actually back that up with some additional paving. And that's why I was talking to the Island Company at that point, so that we can make sure that we don't have some of that material coming onto our new pavement. Then we'll work some of that drainage so it gets redirected where it should be. Right now, it's not in very good shape. So there's some things when we take big equipment out there that we can do that will really make a difference.
It's going to go down the canyon, or is it going to go around the city warehouse down behind the ball field?
The terminus at the, right now, we want to terminate it at where we have the gas, we just put in a new gas pump dispenser. So that's where we'll terminate, actually, and then we'll do some patch paving, actually, in the yard. We have some more work to do down further in the yard with some of the buildings. And so, you know, that's a future project, so we don't want to get a brand-new piece of asphalt down in that area of the road. But we think we're almost finished with the improvements with the new gas dispenser there.
So this, does this bid include the Casino Way? Is that?
We already in our 2016 capital improvement program, we have Casino Way in that project.
Okay.
And so we're going to be paving that from.
At the same time, in the same timeframe?
Yes, exactly, in the same timeframe.
How is this casino, I got to ask you this, I'm sorry, I need to know. How's the Casino Way, how's, how will that proceed? Do they just lay this hot asphalt on top of what we already have out there? Do they prep it in any way? Do they?
Yes, we're going to prep it by any of the failures that are happening in the roadway, some of the alligator failures, some of the potholes.
Right.
We'll take that and do some patching. So we'll actually grind out and make a good structural patch on the side, right next to the water side, where there's actually a swell out of asphalt. We'll now take that and pour that in concrete for 400 feet. And so because water in an asphalt swell does not do very well.
Yeah, that's been getting worse over the years.
Yeah, it just, it doesn't last very long.
Very great.
So we'll do that, and then we do an edge grind, put a tack coat, and then we put an inch, inch and a half of hot mix asphalt.
Glad you identified that.
Yeah.
Just, you were talking about Casino Way, isn't Casino Way Island Company property?
No, it, actually, the city limits, city ownership changes right at the casino.
Very good.
So right at the casino where the road goes out St. Catherine's?
I think it's about halfway in the driveway.
As you go down?
About halfway in the driveway, I think, of the access to go down the casino.
So the Island Company put a big gate on our property, then, to keep us from going to the casino?
Yeah.
I'm just asking. I'm just asking.
Any other questions?
Because I know.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Sorry, thanks.
Good work.
That's true.
Yeah, since we're on the subject matter of resurfacing the roads, I think probably most of the council members are aware of the fact that the city roads were redone some years ago. Some of the asphalt was laid during a rainy period. I'm not sure what all the causes are, but I can tell you for sure that Catalina Street and Beacon Street were not sealed properly. And all you have to do is go look at the house at 301, the Big White House in the corner of Catalina and Beacon Street. On the Catalina side, this, this house was painted white just a couple of years ago. Look how gray, how dirty it is from all the particulates coming off of the asphalt. You go around to the side that faces Beacon, you have the same thing. It's gray. It's dirty. These things are in the air, and you can see how high up on that building they're going, which means that all of us walking by there are breathing this. And if you look up the alley, you'll see around the corner, there's, there's gray, there's black, and then it starts fading, and then it goes to white as it gets up the alley away from Beacon Street. Our streets are a real problem. This is a health hazard. I'm glad this subject is up tonight, and I hope you take a serious look at this.
Thank you for your comment.
So I will review that, and I am an expert in paving, so I'll report back.
Catalina and Beacon seems to be getting pretty bad.
Okay, is there a motion on item 3? Oops, I'm sorry.
Sorry, just found a phone in the restroom. Anybody missing a phone?
Was it the boys or girls?
Linda, Linda, again?
Thank you.
Again, Linda? Yes, I'll make a motion to move item number 3.
Second.
Okay, move to second. Any other comments? Call for the vote.
All eyes.
All eyes. Oh, worked again.
Okay, item number five.
Yeah, item number five is the second reading of a regularly adopted ordinance regarding vicious dogs and creating a spay and neuter program for pit bulls. The council's already adopted an ordinance on an urgency basis. This is to just follow up on the regular adoption of an ordinance which requires two readings. Some questions have come up over the last two weeks since the council first acted. One of them is, is it, would it be appropriate for the city to require all dogs to be spayed and neutered? We did some research on that and the answer is yes, you can. And what other cities have done is they make it a law that all breeds have to be spayed and neutered. And the fee for doing that is, we can keep the fee at it, what it is right now. I think it's about $20, $28 or $26. And then if you don't spay or neuter your dog, there's a penalty. And the penalty can be, LA has it $300, other cities have it $500. So, you have to spay and neuter your dog. If you don't, you pay a penalty of $500. And that's for every year that you don't have that dog spayed or neutered. So, we had, based upon discussions at the last council meeting, we went ahead and looked at this and we think the appropriate time to do that when, is when you're looking and you're adopting your fee ordinance, you can include it in that process. You could still adopt this ordinance right now because that will, it will take some time for that new ordinance to be effective. But if that's the council's direction on this, you could still adopt this ordinance and then give us direction to come back and make this spay and neuter apply to all dogs. And then I just needed to do some research on the mechanism on how to charge people more if they don't have their dogs spayed and neutered.
Is it a penalty or is it a fine?
It's a penalty. It's a penalty.
We don't call it a fine, we call it a penalty.
It's a penalty.
And there's a difference?
Yes. Well, I mean, it's a fine, penalty, kind of the same thing. You want to call it a penalty. If it's a fee, that's got to be based on the cost of service. And so, the cost of service to the city. And so, there's, there's not much of a difference. But if you, the way other cities have done it is, it's a penalty and that, that withstands regulatory scrutiny.
I have a question as to how the city can verify that a dog has been spayed or neutered?
Oh, there's paperwork. When you, when you get it done, it's, it's the vet, I mean, our dog, we've got a little proof of it.
Proof it's a visitor's dog.
Well, again...
Do you ask them to carry the papers around with them?
We don't, we don't require licenses of visitors to come into the city. This is only for people that reside full-time in the city.
So, the dogs either visiting, the man don't have to be spayed or neutered?
Well, I guess, I guess you could prohibit all dogs, yes, you, actually, you could prohibit unneutered or unspayed dogs from coming to Apple. That could be part of it.
That's a...
But then, I mean, you know, this ordinance is partially being enacted from, from issue arising from visitors and not having dogs muzzled or not having control. So, I'm just going to spit out like four or five bullet points and, in hopes of figuring out how far this conversation will go tonight. One, the ordinance is still not defined as far as where dogs, the beginning and end point of where dogs need to be muzzled. It doesn't take into consideration the animals, particular breeds that muzzling them would be detrimental to their health for any period of time. And I am not a particular, particularly schooled person on animals, but I don't believe that we've reached out to our own veterinarian here in town to maybe think about how each of these breeds come into play for different things. Dangerous dogs should go through a judge, just like they do in every other city, that it should be a judge that makes a determination of whether a dog should be euthanized or not. I think we need to take into consideration the dog density in town. I did speak to Dr. Denny and that was one comment that stuck with me is that the density of animals in the space that we have available and the fact that we don't just have the entire island to let our animals flow freely is, is an issue because of the space that we have in town. The, we have a serious issue with how much we actually can do with our current sheriff's department and our code enforcement. So, we're now either going to A, have them spending all of their waking times running around looking and trying to handle this, or we're going to have to hire more people for code enforcement, which is taxpayers' dollars, which, I mean, all of it, I really just believe that we need to think this through a little bit further. We haven't addressed the issue of handling service dogs versus therapy dogs, which are two totally different aspects of animals. And, you know, I, I know that there's a lot more questions from council themselves, but I'm just wondering, do we even, do we gather all of these comments and do we set up a, you know, maybe even a community forum where we can thoughtfully think through this, through this ordinance rather than just slam it through with no plan and no, you know, no way of really communicating it or doing anything with it? And, you know, that, that doesn't even start to talk about, you know, mandatory spay and neuter for, for pit bulls. I mean, you look at the one particular incident that we, that brought this to the forefront of our, well, two incidents, but the latter one really drove home that, you know, yes, pit bulls are a very strong animal and they can do significant damage to a human being, but there's also other breeds of dogs that are, you know, vicious, if you will. They just may not inflict as much harm. But how do you define what harm is? Is a person who is scared of animals that has, you know, maybe a Boston Terrier that runs up and jumps all over it and has an anxiety attack because they're not comfortable? I mean, that's still, you know, an off-leash dog or, or another situation. I mean, I've spent a significant amount of time listening. These aren't even my own issues. These are, these are issues from members of the community and I just don't think that this is thought through enough.
There's been a lot more attacks than two from pit bulls in this town. And they, and they, when they bite you, they bite to kill. I don't have a problem with pit bulls or people who own pit bulls, but I don't take, you don't take them to Disneyland. Pit bull can be like a time bomb on a leash. And it's just a matter of time till it explodes. I, I don't have a problem with those dogs. I mean, they're good for what they're, for what they're bred for, but to have them in an area and when there's somebody that can't control their animal, that's a serious issue. There's been a lot more attacks from pit bulls than, than we know of, than the general public knows of. And I don't want to bring those forward because some of the people who have been attacked would rather not go back to that time. So, I would like to hear from the Humane Society for sure, but I wish Dr. Denny was here. We should have probably invited him here to, so he can let us know exactly what he feels about it, but I'd like to hear from the ladies.
If I could just go into a little background again for those that weren't here after the last attack, the council directed us to draft the most vigorous ordinance we could, so, so we did. And with respect to the muzzling and leashing, your ordinance already provides that there's certain areas that dogs are not allowed, period. And that they're only allowed there when they're traveling through those areas to another area. And so, it's only during that, that time when they're traveling through the areas that are defined in the ordinance are they to be on leash and muzzle. It's not permanent. It's only when they're traveling through areas that they are already prohibited from being in, and the prohibition on that, on those spaces was done decades ago. So, it's just a matter of now we're enforcing it because of incidents.
And if you would just real quick explain, because you talked, touched on the service and whatever. Touch on that one thing that you shared with me earlier.
All right, so, so generally, state law will govern service dogs and, and these are trained dogs that state law provides that during their service, I believe it's they will not be muzzled unless there's, there's some special need. On the other type of dogs, what the law is on those as far as we can tell is that those dogs are required to be muzzled unless the condition for which they are trained requires that they not be muzzled. So, it's not just a carte blanche, oh, because I have a dog for, for a certain need that I have, it doesn't need to be muzzled. It's what is, what is, under state law, you can say, do you have a condition that requires you to have a, a, not a service dog, but I'll just call it a comfort dog, but that's just, you know, a dog like that? And if so, has this dog been trained to help you with that condition? And if that training does not require the dog to be unmuzzled, then the muzzle ban would apply again during the time period that the dog is traveling through that area.
Okay. Diane Stone.
Okay, so, you know, I understand that obviously we had a significant event out on the, on the mole, or on the pier. And I believe it caused kind of a knee-jerk reaction to, as Scott said, to come up with a very stringent plan. However, it's kind of, you're asking these, this ordinance to be put into place before you can implement it. I don't know how you're expecting two code enforcement, code enforcement, not trained as animal control officers to do all the things that you're asking them to do. You're, you're setting out these demands, but you're not providing the ways to facilitate them. So, you know, it's great to have these in place if you can actually do it. One of the first things, as you talk about, if there's an animal at large, that animal needs to be taken to a impound facility. This city doesn't have an impound facility.
I believe we do.
No. What you have is a temporary holding area that was established very quickly. It is not permanent. It is not, it can hold perhaps one dog. I haven't seen it. I don't even know how adequate it is.
Yeah, to your, to both questions, there's a temporary holding area because the sheriff's, the restroom in the sheriff's department was not viewed as a good site for holding a dog. So, we have temporarily established one up at the maintenance yard, but Ms. Stone...
Okay, so, we have a temporary holding area?
Yes.
We're not going to keep dogs forever?
For one dog.
For one dog. So, we're not going to keep them there forever, right? I mean...
No.
No, that dog, the, the dog, the two dogs involved in the incident were shipped over town.
So, we have any incidents, it's a temporary situation, correct? And then we send the dogs to the mainland, correct?
If they are...
To a permanent facility?
That's what we did in this case pending the lawsuit.
Okay, do we have the proper handling and shipping containers to get the dog out of here?
I, I assume, I can't say because I don't manage specifically that function, but let me say this, that Ms. Stone, there are, as she's defined and as we've discussed internally with staff that manages this, is that there are certain requirements when you have, when you're controlled, when there's animal control, that you do certain things. And what we have to do as the city is to determine specifically what is it that we are required to do? What type of training, I think you were alluding to Diane? What type of training those people have to have?
Okay.
And then what, and then, and by the way, we are recruiting for a code enforcement, additional code enforcement that apparently was in the budget, but that recruitment is underway.
Okay, so, bottom line is we have to rise to the occasion, which is we have to, we have to act on what happened. It's not a knee-jerk reaction. There's been multiple maulings on the island from, from pit bulls, okay? This is just something that has come up recently and we'll do whatever we have to. This is, this is, this is where we make these decisions and go forward from here, so.
Okay, and I, I agree that, but my point is that you have gone beyond your capacity to enforce this. I'm saying, when I talk about an impound, basically what we're saying is if there's a dog running down the street right now, code enforcement is supposed to go and get that dog and go put it someplace. Well, now, say there's a second dog running down the street someplace, they're supposed to go get that dog and put it someplace. I'm not talking about a vicious dog, I'm talking about just a dog that's out loose.
We'll get that. We'll do that.
But you don't have that.
We have one place now and we're going to immediately work on the second place because you're bringing this to our attention and we're grateful for that.
Okay.
And we're not perfect, but we're reacting on something that serious happened. A man almost got, a man almost lost his life. And, and this is why we have to make this an urgent...
All right, and I understand that, but I feel like you're overstepping the boundaries of what you need to do to make this safe. You're requiring now massive ordinances regarding all dogs, not just pits, because you have to include all dogs. I think Cindy brought up the issue about the parameters. It's very unclear at the mole, for example, what are, what are you talking about? Are you talking about the parking lot? Are you talking about the roadway? You know, these are things that need to be clarified very specifically. When you're talking about coming off the green pier, if someone wants to have their dog at Coyote Joe's, because people can do that, does that dog then have to be muzzled the whole time it's there? I've had my dog out at the mole, standing in line where it's very hot and we've had to wait, you know, a long period of time when you've got big crowds. Having a muzzle on that dog can restrict their breathing ability, causing them to overheat. I mean, what, you know, how long can a dog stand there in that heat with a muzzle on? That's just one of the things. One of the other things I wanted to mention was, I walked down Front Street today and I saw two locals, not service dogs, walking down Front Street with their dogs. You're going to have to get the locals to buy into this because if you don't, you're going to have conflicting feelings and, and issues with visitors, boaters especially. We have a lot of boaters now that come over with their dogs on board. And it's got to be across the board and it's not going to happen overnight, but there's going to be problems with that. One of the other things is we're saying that all dogs need to be on a lead at all times, under control of their owner. That's absolutely true. But where are you going to take a dog that needs to exercise in a safe environment where it's not going to get into problems with other dogs or other people? We have got to get a dog park in this community. Our dog population has grown exponentially and something has to happen. We can't all have yards where we can exercise our dog. There has to be someplace to go with these animals. And that's part of the issue of what we're dealing with here. Service dog versus therapy dog, as you were saying, it's correct. Everybody's under the misconception that a therapy dog or a comfort dog or what can be excluded from all of these regulations and that's not true. Only a service dog. As a matter of fact, I don't believe there's one service dog in this community at this time. Lots of therapy dogs. We all know about that. But the only time a therapy dog can be off-lead, for example, is if it's, for example, in a school doing its job, maybe reading with a child or in the hospital where it's visiting a patient. Other than that, they don't qualify for special treatment. That's going to be a problem.
Cheryl? Or Marty, who wants to go first? You were just, moral support, just standing there?
But I just want to add that the impound area, I mean, I haven't been out to see it, but...
Go a little closer to the mic, please.
Sorry, it's been described to me, but I don't believe there's like protection from the elements or anything for an animal that is put there. And by the way, there were two dogs. One was in the bathroom and one was at this makeshift.
Right, right. Yeah, I think they did put some kind of a little cover over it just for this, but, but I haven't had the opportunity to go out there. I don't think any of us really have.
I have.
I think the point...
Did it have a cover on it?
I, I think the point is that there are certain requirements that we need to meet for an impound area. We are doing, we, right now, what we can and, but as was said, there's other things that we need to do and we need to do them sooner than later and that's...
We need to do them immediately.
Yeah.
Because we already, you know, we're implementing this ordinance, and these are things that we have to do. The cream is floated to the top. This is the issue. Excuse me. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Marty.
Okay, thank you. I was just going to say, and the city manager just--
Marty?
I know, I'm short. The city municipal code requires you to have an animal shelter. It's not, it's required by our own code. And it has to be a suitable enclosure, and it shall, but it has to meet the requirements of a section of the Food and Agriculture Code. So it's not that simple. And it's something that we've been asking for years now, since they tore down the one in Falls Canyon. In my opinion, the easiest way to do this right now, to adopt any kind of ordinance, would be simply to say that all owners or handlers must physically be in control of a dog at all times. If that were implemented and it was obeyed, that incident on the pier would not have happened. That was because she couldn't control those two dogs. So anyway, that's what I wanted to add to everything.
But Marty, I mean, forgive me, but that's, to me, common sense, that you, you know, if you have an animal, and that's what's frustrating to me, is that you have an animal, you have a duty to be in control of that animal.
Exactly.
So when you're not in control of an animal, a situation like that happens. So--
Right, and it's the owner's fault.
For us to say, I mean, it, to me, it doesn't hold, it doesn't hold water to say, you need to be in control of your, your animal, to write an ordinance saying you need to be in control of your animal. I mean, I would rather see something that says, you know, if a situation happens, here are the repercussions. If you are unable to control your animal, here are these repercussions.
I agree.
And that, that whole, that, to me, resonates to off-leash, to the persons whose animals jump out of their golf cart, to the person at the top of the ramp at the mall that lets the leash go and lets the animal run down to its other owner.
I agree with you 100%.
The locals that take their animals out to the mall and let them run around, I mean, we, I'd like to see us addressing the specifics instead of just saying that you need to keep your animal under control.
Okay, and I agree with you. And I also agree with you that there should be more community input into this ordinance. So, thank you.
I have one more point, and Cindy, you hit, you hit on so many of the important issues here that are, that need to be addressed. And the one I have a huge issue with is six dash 1.134.
Yeah, administrated.
That, saying that someone, I guess, within the city staff or something--
Right.
Could be the person who determines whether an animal, you have your own in-house hearing here.
Yeah, says may request administratively regarding the city's, the dog's disposition. And was that intended for us to be the administrative hearing?
No, 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 that would be, it would be the city manager or his designee. And the reason that is in there is state law says that if the city declares, if, if, under state law, there's a procedure where you go to court, and you have a hearing, you give certain days' notice, and a judge decides. And that can take sometimes a month or so, depending on the court's calendar. And so, this, one of the changes that we did in this ordinance was to give the city the option to do it itself. You can still go to court and do it, but we amended the ordinance to give the city the option to declare dogs vicious or potentially vicious dogs. So we just added an option.
And what makes us qualified to do that? What is the training that we have?
A dog that bites--
The same training a judge would have.
Well, let me, let me, I don't want that relish, that, that chore, as a dog owner and as a cat owner. But a dog that, that repeatedly bites people and viciously or kills another animal, I don't know what training one might need that would tell you that, that animal should at least not be on the island.
If I could just address that one issue on what makes us qualified. In the ordinance itself that you adopted, you specified specific facts as to what, what circumstances would lead you to find a dog vicious, and they're in the ordinance. So it's basically take, applying the law to the facts of that case. And so, the law is defined, or the circumstances and the criteria are in the ordinance. It's just applying that ordinance to the--
Or you could use, like you do with vehicles, a hearing officer. You could, you could, you could certainly do that, but, but I think you're, you're looking at a cost, and you're, and, but, but that's your, that's certainly the council's call, and, and I understand the idea to be, to be fair. I mean, and it's not something that, that my office particularly wants, but I do what you tell me, not what I always maybe want to do, but that's what I'll, so.
So let me, let me qualify this, okay? I'm very uncomfortable with dogs. I'll admit it, okay? When the nicest, you know, chocolate Labrador is running around, and it's, you know, the sweetest dog protects its children in its home and is loving and caring, that dog comes running towards me, I feel anxious. I am very uncomfortable. I am automatically gonna go on defensive behavior, whether I'm pushing the dog away from me, or whether I'm moving myself out of the way. That is considered unprovoked behavior that requires a defensive action by any person. So I don't know when this adorable chocolate lab is running towards me, whether or not it's really adorable, or whether or not it's coming after me. And, and any individual human being isn't necessarily gonna know, if they don't know that dog specifically, they're not gonna know whether, whether or not that is a friendly or non-friendly animal. And I guess that's what I'm concerned, because we're now saying, so, so what? So Cheryl comes up and says, well, I've, this dog has come at me twice, and it's unprovoked, and it ran at me, and it made me uncomfortable, and now I want you to declare it a potentially dangerous vicious dog. I mean, that's what makes me uncomfortable, is I don't--
You mean the fact that there's gray areas?
To me, it's a very, the ordinance itself has too many gray areas in it. Like, are these potentially, engages in any behavior that requires a defensive action by any person to prevent bodily injury? And, and does that mean that, how do you qualify that? So do I have to write a written complaint to the city twice on a particular dog, or can I, can, do I have to call the sheriff's department?
I think it's defined as by drawing blood, but, correct? If a draw, if a dog draws blood, then--
No. Item A does, or item number one doesn't say that.
Okay, are we really confusing the whole issue right here with all, 99% of the good dogs in this town, and the good owners that bring their dogs over, and the good owners that exist in this town, with the fierce vicious dogs that can be as small as 30 pounds, they can jump up and bite your neck, and they go for the jugular vein, they go for your carotid arteries. They, they know where the blood is at. I mean, we're talking about pit bulls that have bit people, that have torn people to pieces right now. We're not talking about the cute little dogs that walk around town.
We're talking about all dogs in this ordinance. This is not just pit bull.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about dogs like--
Your ordinance does not just talk about pit bulls. It's referring to all dogs.
That's because we legally have to, have to, have to have that type of verbiage in the ordinance. It's, it's the law. Personally, I'd like to, I'd like to outlaw pit bulls in this town. That's what I personally like to do. I'd like to go to the state and say, no more pit bulls in this town, and get right to the meat of what the problem is. And I, I actually asked for that directive. I mean, I hinted around that directive last time, and I would like to ask for that directive at this point, because I'm getting to the point to where we're making what I feel is a simple problem into a massive problem right now, because we're getting, we're not getting to the meat of the issue, which is vicious, voracious dogs that, that bite to kill. And they don't know any better. They're good dogs. They were bred for a reason. But you shouldn't have them at Disneyland. And the streets of Avalon, I would equate to, like, a Disneyland atmosphere. So that's what I'm saying, is like, as, as, as a person who creates policy for this town, I don't think I'd like to put my children at risk with something like this. And, and there's, there's good dogs, and I believe that the good dogs can, can actually be identified. But until they jump up and bite somebody and kill, or kill a child, or another animal, or create a crazy situation like we had, and there was one like three days ago over in LA, where the sheriffs had to shoot three pit bulls. So it's just, it's just non-stop. It keeps going. You can go and look at, at the records for these dogs, and there's, there's a lot of good that they are, and what they do. But not on the streets of Avalon, downtown, where all the people are, where all the children are, with a handler that doesn't know how to handle a dog like that. They're extremely brilliant. They're extremely physical. And when they want to kill you, they will. You can't stop them. A muzzle's not gonna stop them, and a leash isn't gonna stop them. The only thing that's gonna stop them is a bullet. And, and the police officers--
Then why are you doing this ordinance? I mean, I think your ordinance is, is quite broad, and perhaps biting off more than you can handle right now. I, I wanna go back to one other thing, though, with this six dash 1134. One of the things that it talks about in here, and I, I personally would not want to be the person, we have, we have, it's in the books that you, this goes before a judge. There's the Dangerous Dog Act. It's already in place. So why do we have to change that? The other thing is, what it then goes on to say is that the animal control person can be directed to euthanize that dog. I'm sorry, if you've got a vicious dog, I don't think Miguel or Christian are gonna want to approach that animal and have to stick a needle in it. That's, shouldn't be part of, of this directive here.
No, no, that, that is to mean that if there's a determination that a dog is found to be, to be euthanized, that the animal, that the code enforcement person is responsible for taking that dog and getting it euthanized, not doing it himself.
He's not gonna do it himself.
And they are not, and they're not trained to do it right now.
They're not gonna do it.
They wouldn't do it themselves. They'd take it to Dr. Denny, or in the case of the two dogs, of, in the case of the two dogs that are currently in custody, they're over town awaiting the judge's final determination.
Yeah, let's get some more comment.
And one last thing. Talking about mandatory span neuter, and I have no problem with that. However, the cost involved in doing that is probably gonna be quite prohibitive on this island, because we don't have a subsidy in place. Over town, span neuters can be done because different entities are subsidized with grants and other monies. That isn't available here. So you're gonna expect everybody, and it obviously would have to be done in a very timely manner, according to this, but I don't know how you can possibly implement that.
And Diane, and like, and we talked the other day, and I think, again, this being an urgency and not, and the things not thought out, because we talked about options, and even giving names and numbers of where they can go to those free clinics, because everybody's got a commuter book, you know? And there is some responsibility on the part of pet owners, just like having a kid, you know? So--
And I, and I agree that that's necessary, but I think--
But we need that in the system.
In implementing that, you're gonna have to think that through.
Yes, yes, I totally agree.
There is other options, too, right?
Yes.
With possible portable--
Oh, well, I'm--
Things coming over.
I know that--
Man, we could look into it a little more.
Again, I know in LA County, there are certain clinics that, that do it at low cost, and then there's one clinic that we were looking into for our own dog that was, is a portable span neuter, that goes to different locations. And possibly, they could come over here.
We have the resources to be able to do it on the island. We don't, it's, it's cost prohibitive. And so, one of the conversations that I had with Diane Stone and Dr. Denny was, if the Humane Society, or Dr. Denny, who are much more in tune with, with options and funding and sources, could, if they identified grant money that we could go after, the city council could authorize staff services to go after that grant funding. So, you know, we don't necessarily know, and, you know, we have one grant administrator who's working on a thousand other items, but if something is presented to us, then we could certainly allocate the staff resources to go after it.
Right.
Just, and one second, because you have someone on staff who is knowledgeable about pursuing grants. That's not me. But I think that's something else that you could look into, that perhaps Audrey's able to pursue that, that possibility.
Okay, I'd like to start with, what, what laws, ordinances were on the books at the time that this attack happened?
Do you want me to answer that?
Sure.
Okay, we had a law requiring that dogs be on leashes at all times at, in every area on Front Street, but did not specifically include the pier, or, well, no, it, no, you had to have your dog on leash throughout the city, period. It said--
Including the pier?
Everywhere, everywhere. Your ordinance also provided that there was a program for declaring dogs vicious, and had three criteria for declaring dogs vicious. We added a fourth, which was if it's been deemed vicious in another community. We also added a new provision dealing with potentially dangerous, potentially vicious dogs, which just said, these are dogs that, because of their behavior, we're gonna put on, we're gonna get special notice to. You had a ban on all dogs on Front Street and the beaches area, and, and along that area. But, so you couldn't have dogs there, period, unless they were traveling from one location to another. The only change we did there was we required dogs, as they're traveling through those areas, to have muzzles. We added the pier and the malls, areas where dogs also have to have muzzles due to the number of people there. We increased some of the penalties for disobeying of the ordinance. We, see what else we did?
I think you elaborated more than what your question was, or no?
Yeah, I'm just going, so--
You had a little more information than I wanted, but thank you.
I'm answering the question, Bruce.
Was she cited? Was the woman cited per our ordinance? Does anybody know that? I mean, did we enforce our own ordinance that we already had on the books? She obviously violated it.
You mean on which attack, didn't you? You mean the recent one, Bruce?
Yeah, I'm talking about the recent attack that has generated all this.
There's both. I understand that there's both civil and criminal, that, that there is a criminal, there was a civil action taken with it, we took.
Weren't the dogs on a leash? Their dogs were on a leash.
And then, and then there was a criminal action that's before the district attorney to determine if there's the elements of a crime because of the nature of what happened and the possibility that this had already occurred in another jurisdiction. That's my understanding.
So it'd be like criminal negligence, is what they're looking at?
Again, that's prosecutor, and then we're handling the matter, the civil matter, where the court has already determined that dogs are vicious, both of them. And then the judge is now waiting for the owners of the dogs to see if there's another way other than disposing of them, and his suggestion was, maybe there's a shelter for vicious dogs.
How about teeth, tooth removal?
There was no, there was no way for us to know that the dogs were, were deemed vicious, though, correct?
Correct.
And our ordinance was being followed because the dogs were on leashes, correct?
Well, they were on leashes, but they got out of control, but yeah, she lost control.
Of course, yes, but they were on leashes.
Yes, yes.
And even, like I said, you can have them on leashes and muzzles. It doesn't matter if it's a pit bull.
Well, this isn't counting against my three minutes.
Actually, so, the answer to Councilmember Sampson's question is, under the ordinance that existed at the time, these dogs would have been vicious because they would have previously bitten someone. We didn't know that. But vicious dogs are prohibited from being in Avalon.
Ah.
And that was already the law before--
So our ordinance is in place pretty good right now. I mean--
Yeah.
Well, I mean, again, we added a definition of vicious. We added potentially vicious. We added an area. We required the muzzle. And we added the option of the city-- we added an area, we required the muzzle, and we added the option of the city to make a determination on viciousness rather than a court.
Fortunately, it's just, that's, that's a great thing, but it's too late at the point where if somebody gets hurt, and, okay, great questions.
Bruce, continue.
Okay, so I have problems with the ordinance as it's been passed as an emergency ordinance, urgency ordinance. I don't like the muzzle, muzzles on the mole. I think the dogs go through enough, the owners go through enough, having the dog muzzled on the boat ride, which we all need to do. I have been traveling with dogs, I've got about 25 years of experience, the dog's always muzzled when it goes down the gangplank, when it cuts up the gangplank, it can't wait to get the muzzle off. But in both cases, it's stressful for the animals, and I've never, ever had a problem, I've never experienced a problem with anybody else's dogs, seen anything else, because dogs get off the boat and they have their muzzles off. Now, I think you, you know, you can go to extremes to try to, you know, ensure public safety, the most extreme method would be just ban all dogs. Then there will be no more dog bites. Otherwise, try to, try to come up with a workable ordinance. We already had an ordinance on the book that this woman violated, and she violated other, other law. This is an extreme case. The mole, queuing to the mole and being on the mole with your dog, getting ready to get on the boat, I think it's unfair to the dogs, as Diane mentioned, it can be very hot, they don't breathe well with those things, it is air conditioned once they get on the boats. I think you're going to have a monstrous enforcement problem. How are you going to have your, your code enforcement take care of all this? I think you're also going to have a problem on the pier. I mean, there needs to be, those dogs need to be leashed, and they need to know that they're going from, as Scott said, it's to get off the pier, out of the, out of the mall, malled wall, the area where dogs are not allowed anyway. It's just an ingress and egress. So I, I think what you need, what are you going to do if somebody comes over? You come over on a boat, you bring a dog, okay, well, it's been a little ride, the dog probably needs to get off and use a facility somewhere. If they don't happen to have had enough foresight to bring a muzzle along, now, a leash is not too much to ask. Every dog owner going anywhere ought to have a leash, but I think it's a little much to expect them on boats to have the foresight to bring a muzzle to get their dog off of the pier onto some dirt somewhere that the dog probably desperately needs. So maybe you need to have more education, something through the harbor department, so people clearly understand, as part of the, you get information when you get a mooring. Part of that information should be, you can, you can take your dog off onto the pier, and you can, and you, and you have to take the dog and immediately get out of the area that's otherwise prohibited for dogs. I think, look at something enforceable, and I understand, Joe, about the pit bulls, the vicious dogs, we do need to control them, absolutely. I think, under the terms of this ordinance, my previous dog, my beloved Maggie, would have been considered a vicious breed, and the worst thing she ever did was lick my leg in the same spot for too long, and I got a little bit of a rash.
And she wasn't vicious.
So you have to be careful how you, how you, how you, how you put these things together, and I think all, all the muzzle, all the muzzle restrictions, I think you just, it's over the top. And I think you concentrate on vicious dogs, concentrate on people knowing that they have to get from the pier out of the mauled area. That's a starting point.
So, let me ask you, what is, what disturbs me about this a little bit is the muzzles on Front Street. I mean, on the mole, on the pier, you know, getting on and off the boats, but are we really going to do that on Front Street? Is that how the code is written?
Yes.
They're not supposed to be on Front Street anyway.
They're not supposed to be on Front Street.
You just said they can go from point A to point B. What if you got to walk from-
It's only supposed to be really across to-
From the, from the north side of town to the boat?
Yeah.
And you have to, you got to walk through Front Street?
No.
No, they're supposed to go across Catalina and go around. You're not supposed to walk down Front Street.
So you're not even supposed to have a dog at all in Front Street?
Nope, that's what the law's been for years.
And here's a young man that wants to speak. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to just answer Bruce's question. I think the harbor department has already got the word out already to most of the boaters. So to Bruce's question, to get the word out there, there has been progress in that area.
3,000, 3,000, I think, 64, Brian, said that they notified mooring owners and other friends of the harbor.
So there is progress being made, communicating with, with the boaters, okay?
And those, let me ask you another question, and I'm sorry, when those little dog, when those little dogs, when those dogs came off the pier, did they come on a shoreboat, or were they on their own dinghy?
I don't know.
They're on the dinghy?
So those people that have their dogs on a dinghy don't even have to go to the pier. They could go to any one of our dinghy docks and take them off as well, so.
Can Oscar speak, please?
Yeah, I'm here to approach, I highly disagree with the fact that you consider pit bulls to be vicious dogs. I understand the breed might be considered vicious, but not every pit bull is a vicious animal. Like the previous speaker said, he had a pit bull that all he did was lick his leg for too long, and I'm in the same case scenario. I'm a pit bull owner, and he is the friendliest, most loving dog that I have, and he's a pit bull, and he's actually been bitten to the point where blood has came out of him twice from other dogs that are small, so they're kind of just overlooked. And it wasn't to the point where I needed to take him to the vet, it was just a nice little bite, and he, his instinct wasn't to attack. He actually got scared and backed away and just hid behind me. It's all about how you raise an animal. It's in the owner, how you raise it. I understand that some people look at them as vicious dogs, but they're not. I think it's more how the owner raises them to be, how an animal is going to be out in public with other human beings and other animals, because he gets along with cats, little Chihuahuas, bigger dogs than him. I've taken him to the mainland where he's been around horses and goats and all kinds of other animals, and he hasn't shown one bit of viciousness in him.
I've seen your dog, and it's a beautiful dog, and I've seen you handle him, and you handle him very competently and very nicely. Can I ask you something? What do you think sets off a pit bull? Do you have any idea of what would make? I mean, that's probably, this is a question I can ask for any, about any dog, but the breed of a pit bull, they're bred for a certain purpose, and, and they don't realize that what, what damage their jaws can inflict on another animal or a human. Do you have any idea, I mean, asking, I'm inquiring with you, because you have a pit bull, but yours doesn't, yours has never gone off, and you're, like I said, he's a beautiful animal, he's a good specimen of a pit bull, and like I said, I don't have, I don't have a personal problem with pit bulls, I just, I have to look after the community and the people in it. So what do you think sets pit bulls off? Have you heard of it? Or is it, like you said, is it, is it the owner? Is it the way it's treated?
I think it's the way it's treated, the environment it's raised upon, and that's just my personal opinion. I don't have facts.
Yeah.
That's what I think, and no offense, I think you're kind of contradicting yourself by saying that you have no problem against pit bulls, because you made both statements tonight that pit bulls should be banned from the island, and now you're saying that you don't have a problem with them. So I just don't think that maybe things are being thought clearly, like some other people have had concerns about the breed.
If, if nobody knows what sets off a pit bull-
I'm sure there's somebody that knows, but maybe we don't know here, and that's something we should look into rather than-
I don't think anybody knows, because there's been people who have pit bulls, and they've, they've been great pets, until one day, they just go up and they attack a kid. It's happened before here on Catalina. It was a great family pet. All of a sudden, the kid had the pit bull in its face, on its face, and nobody can explain why. I, I don't understand why. I, I still don't understand why, and I have to make a decision on that, based on that. Now, yeah, we have an emergency ordinance that we've, we've tried to get going because we wanted to stress the importance of how we feel up here. We don't want to see people getting eaten up by dogs that are supposed to be friendly, and nobody, he was a good dog until he lunged at somebody and bit him. Something set him off. Apparently, it was the other dog. I don't feel somebody needs to get mangled because their dog barks at another dog. I don't feel that's justification, and neither did the judge that ruled on that last case. But if someone can help me understand the nature of the dog, so I understand it a little better, maybe, you know, we don't have to go through these, through these proceedings, but until then, I gotta, I gotta protect the people who, in Avalon, the visitors and the people who live here. I don't want to see anybody get eaten up like that. And I think you're, like I said, I think you're a competent dog owner. I would say that I would exempt you from that because your, your dog has proven to be a good dog, and he can mend with the community, but going forward, I wouldn't, I, I really don't want to see dogs brought over that we don't know where they come from.
Madam Mayor?
How they were treated.
Yes.
If you're finished on that?
No.
Wait, stay there, Oscar.
If, if, if I could, there, obviously, there are competent owners like this gentleman, this young man here. There were some people who were here at the last meeting sent, they said, what do insurance companies, how do they look at this issue? And there's households, there's, I don't want to name the company because I don't want to get people, but, but these are insurance companies licensed in California. Households with any one of the following pure breed or mixed breed dogs may not be written for insurance, with homeowners or rental. It's an Akita, a Boxer, a Chow, a Doberman Pinscher, pit bull, AK American Staffordshire Terrier, Pressa Canario, I've never heard of that, a Rottweiler, or Wolf hybrids. And then, and, and so what the insurance companies are saying is, based on their experience, that they won't, they won't, now, that doesn't mean there aren't responsible owners, it just means that, from a market, and in terms of unacceptable risk, there are limited, animal liability coverage is optional, but if purchased, coverage for the following dogs and animals are excluded. That you, that is, you can, you know, I have a Shih Tzu, who's just a vicious little girl, and, and especially if she's, her mother's not with her, my, my wife, but, but in the names the same bulls, same, same dog, except it adds Akitas, Huskies, Malamutes, Bull Mastiffs, Staffordshires, and so, and if any of the dogs, of these dogs, even if they're under limited liability, if they injure someone, they're not covered under the insurance policies. So this is the insurance industry, which is talking about what, what the standards they use in writing policies, whether you're a homeowner or a renter. So that's just, I mean-
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad we don't have postmen, because I know they, you know, and I'm glad we don't have yards, so when the meter reader comes, there's no dog to attack them. Any dog, I'm not attacking pit bulls.
I mean, a comment was made to me today from a former flying boats employee that, you know, one of the best reasons for, one of the most difficult parts of the job is dealing with the dogs in people's yards, or the, you know, people opening the door and the, and dogs or whatnot. I mean, it's, you know.
Yeah. Let me ask you a question, though. Is your dog fixed?
No, he is not.
Okay. Let me ask a question. Are you an AKC, AKC breeder of pit bulls?
No, I am not.
Okay. Would you have a prob, what would your comment be if we said that all dogs in Avalon need to be spayed or neutered?
I would be open minded. I don't think I would have a problem with either decision, but from what I, from, I don't know that as a fact, from what I have heard and been told, is that depending on the dog's certain age, once it's too old and you, they get neutered, it could actually even make the opposite effect on them, and they can become more vicious. Like I said, I don't know how true that is. That's just what I've been told.
And I asked, I asked Dr. Denny that same question, and he said, that's not true.
That's not, okay.
I did ask him that because I was concerned, I didn't know either, and I did ask him that, and he says, no, that's not true.
And my, yeah, and my whole thing was, we have enough dogs on the island, and there's enough dogs to be adopted on the mainland, so to, to keep having any more dogs of any kind is something that I would support, is just, we don't need any more puppies unless somebody goes over and, you know, gets them that way. And they're not cheap to buy over town either, but anyway, okay. Rudy Pilch? Oh, no, Oscar, do you want to say some more?
That's it.
If you do, you could come back up.
That's all I got to say.
You have a minute and 14 seconds left.
Rudy's on the clock. Good input. Thank you.
Rudy Pilch, 3346, last moments. I just think that we've all had a significant learning curve from what we've gone through just tonight and even the original hearing. But what I'd like to comment on, I mean, and I believe this is what I heard from the city attorney, was that a matter of fact, you didn't need an urgency ordinance to enforce the issue that, that we're talking about. Is that correct?
Well-
You indicated that in the, in the existing ordinance that we have now, we had the tools to, to enforce the issue and take care of it, and, and what occurred was, I think it was a knee jerk reaction, and the issue of the, the amount of damage that was done to this one person, but it could be, it could have been taken care of exclusively with the ordinance that we had already. You've reinforced some of the language in there, but some of this language is just kind of overdone, and, and I think that's what you're hearing from the community, is that we, we should take a step back at this juncture, and, and let's go through the ordinance again and deal, ask questions from the local community. We have a humane society that really spends a tremendous amount of time on, on animal issues, and I think they've done a marvelous job. They weren't consulted, as far as I know, prior to the creation of the ordinance. So anyhow, I would like to appeal to the council to not approve this for a second time, and step back, and let's, let's review the ordinance and, and make some sense out of it.
I think we're just talking about it anyways. We're-
Well, no.
It's worth talking about. We've all learned something, and that's what I'm saying.
We're trying, we are learning something.
I think what we've learned is that this was kind of an overkill, and it-
Oh, it wasn't an overkill at all. A man almost died.
I'm sorry, everything that I've heard and that I've read so far, it was an overkill. And, and I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to, you know, stand here and argue about that. All I'm saying is that I think we've all learned something, including the council, and it's time now to kind of just step back and, and let's review this thing again and, and get it down to something that makes more sense than what we have.
Thank you, Rudy.
Thank you, Rudy.
Hi, Linda.
Where's your phone?
Could you get an extra 15 minutes for that comment?
15 seconds for that comment.
I just have a little bit to say. I just want to express, the more restricted, the less exercise, the more aggressive dogs can get. Dogs are less aggressive with exercise, you know, running, jumping, playing, et cetera. It's just hard to get when they're restricted to a leash, and we don't have any free space for them, because basically, with the conservancy and the city and everything, dogs have to be on a leash. We just really need a location for dogs to have some freedom and an area for exercise, you know, being able to run. I can't run, I don't run. My husband runs, so they get a little bit with him sometimes. You know, they need some space to be able, I have one that can just shoot across faster than any of us can go. I don't care. But it helps manage the aggressiveness, too. I mean, the more you, you know, just hold these, restrict these dogs, the more aggressive even the friendly ones get.
But I have a question. So, so assuming you're one of you, those people that let their dogs off, and you're walking and the dog is off the leash, I'm assuming you do that based on what you said. I've, I've never witnessed it. So, and I go by with my little dog, and your dog's in full running mode, is your dog going to want to run over and visit me?
I'm, I don't let him off in an area around other animals. I learned my lesson a long time ago. I keep, if I do it, I go to an area and I maintain, and I look- I keep, if I do it, I go to an area and I maintain and I look around a lot.
Okay.
And I, because even if we have a dog park, I probably wouldn't bring mine in to when there's other dogs there. But they need a place.
Yeah, I know.
It's.
Yes.
It's really important.
So you bring up some good points. Is this really our place to have to accommodate? I mean, and I want to because I love dogs. I don't have one because I don't have the time and, and the effort to put them out there. I don't think there's a lot of places that can accommodate animals here unless you can get up into the hills. And, and they're not, they're still supposed to be on leashes when they go up in the conservancy areas. There's some places in town you can run them. People take them on the golf course, but you, you can't, we can't say that that's a good idea because that's not even our property. We can, we can go to the island company and ask them if maybe there could be a time when there could be a specific area that we could ask them for running privileges on the golf course. But what we're talking about is a massive area. The conservancy has a huge dog park at Middle Ranch and they, I see the, the people with dogs out there in it all the time. I like to accommodate people's needs here. I like to be known as a dog friendly community, but right now we're not.
Leslie Warner, 306 Whitley. I'm speaking on behalf of Paula Patterson, who also lives on Whitley. She's unable to be here, so I'm just going to read her comments to you. If dogs are leashed and able to be controlled by their owner, which is already city code, most issues are eliminated. When dogs are not leashed and approach me and my dog aggressively, I am afraid. I have heard multiple times the owner tell me their dog has never done anything like that before. Dogs are still walking the front street, leashed and unleashed. I agree with Diane in that a law is only as effective as it is enforced. There are no code enforcement people on duty outside of business hours. May I call the non-emergency police number to report a dog off leash? Question for you. The code in place is quite explicit currently. It's simply unable to be enforced. Once again, I will reiterate, I cannot know when a pit approaches me, whether it's a nice or an aggressive pit. Twice my dog has been attacked by a pit, once on the island, once off. I can't help but be afraid of them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes. And I, and that is a, Paula brings up a, a good point on the law enforcement side of things too. You know, where they, when codes not there, can the deputies enforce, did they be enforcing that?
Just two things. I think the captain, he can speak for himself, but I think he's indicated that, that, and he's had conversations with Ms. Ratty in code enforcement, that they will, that they support whatever restrict, whatever efforts the council wants us to make, that the sheriff's department is our enforcement, is part of our enforcement program. I also mentioned that there is a budgeted position apparently that we are now recruiting for. We, we learned that, as the things we learn. And we are recruiting to create an eligibility list and to hire someone. Because the point made that, that the off time, the, the non, you know, is, is, or when we have peak days, when we have many tourists in town, that, that that's when we need people, or, so those off hours is what we're going to try to cover, or those high peak days with, with, with additional enforcement.
Right, okay.
Staggered schedule.
Yeah, I like the way Ollie comes up with, go ahead, Ollie. Let's see what you're doing now.
I would just like to suggest that we table this for the time being. We solicit written responses from the Humane Society and from the Dr. Denny and see what that changes in the ordinance. Maybe there is no revision, maybe it's, we throw it out. But I, I don't feel confident enough to talk about this. But I think the Humane Society and the vet, and also if there's anything from the sheriff who wants to throw in there.
I also would like to add to that, that, that staff meet or elicit information from the Catalina Express as well, since, or any other cross-channel carrier that's working out at the mall.
The, so, so, and some of the things, whether this ordinance is in or not, wherever it is, and we'll have to figure out where the heck it is. But I think we have our homework with the expanding, getting the impound yard done, training, proper training for staff, local buy-in even to the, to the one before last council meeting. Of course, working on the dog park, that doesn't happen quickly, but, but I know it's in the works. And so those are things that no matter what happens, need, needs, need to happen.
We have to do that.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, so what do we do with this today though? We've got an urgency ordinance on the board.
So you already.
I know, that's what I'm saying. What do we do?
Okay, again, you already have an urgency ordinance that is adopted that is identical to this one.
Right.
And that ordinance remains in place until it is repealed. You can direct staff to only enforce the urgency ordinance that you adopted using prosecutorial discretion. And for those situations which are serious, that we can still have the tools set forth in, in the new ordinance, but that staff exercises discretion during this period when you are refining the ordinance.
Did you all understand that?
So.
So we can still implement the serious aspects of the ordinance.
If there are instances or serious things that happen, we have an ordinance with a lot of teeth in it, teeth in it right now. And then the council will be studying possible revisions to the ordinance, but in the meantime, we will enforce the current ordinance for serious cases that staff in its discretion believes are appropriate.
So direct.
I understand that. Does the community understand that pretty much? If you don't, let's say it again.
What we will do though, is clarify with the city attorney, what, what Ms. Ratty, who ministers program and in the code enforcement staff, and I'm sure the sheriff's staff, we want to be sure, we'll check with the city attorney to be sure, based on what I'm hearing consensus, that, that we need to know what, specifically what that means and then we'll communicate that out to the public.
But so, but, but truly, because now we've got code enforcement and I believe law enforcement kind of on alert.
Yeah, they are on alert.
So they should be alert on dogs need to be under control at all times. Dogs need to be on a leash. No dogs on front street. Only walk down the mall when you're going, continuing to go that way. And that's.
Right. Do we need to recertify our, our code in some way, shape or form, or get, get them up on dog, dog behavior, management, training, observation?
That's one of the directions of council.
So maybe we can also update like our website, like somebody had mentioned tonight, and I don't remember who it was, but thank you for saying this, an informational package. In other words, this is how it works. And, and I've heard this from a few different areas, like when you're talking about vehicles, this is how it works. So they go, go to our website, pets, animals, this is how it works. No, we don't have a dog park. You have to be muzzled on the pier when you come off the pier. No, we don't have a big area, so we suggest that you do this when you bring your dogs over. I mean, there should be some kind of education. I think Bruce actually brought that up and he's gone now, but I think it was a good point. We need to identify that this is how our city works with dogs in this case. I mean, and there's a lot of other areas we could do that on our website.
And the chambers, I know, willing to get that word out, whatever the word be.
So we have directions. Can we take a break, please?
Yeah, please.
Okay, well, we've got another three to go. This is gonna, this was gonna be one of those quickies, wasn't it, kid?
Well, that's why I said, what I said at the beginning is to just pull it.
Okay, and we're back, and we're with item number seven, Verge Snack Bar Contract Amendment.
Oh, I get to turn the page.
Oh, Dan?
Who pulled this one? I don't remember now.
I didn't pull this one.
I did.
You pulled it?
Yep.
Good evening. We are here to answer any questions regards to it. Owner/Operator Ivan Leva doing business at Verge Snack Bar has approached the city of Avalon to go through the ABC process for a beer and wine license at Joe Machado Field. In there, there are some conditions, as was suggested earlier, that beer and wine would not be sold during youth sports, whether it be a city program, whether it be a school program, as we've got soccer teams and football teams, those types of activities, as well as we oftentimes have youth programs come over, we have a youth soccer camp come over, no beer and wine would be available during those times. So, he's primarily looking for adult programs, providing lunch, and maybe a place to sit down and have a beer or a glass of wine. We are getting more and more, especially with the upgrades to the overall facility, more and more people requesting the use of the patio for parties and being able to serve beer and wine during those. So, we're here to answer any questions you may have.
And if I could, the municipal code addresses the consumption of alcohol at Joe Machado Ballpark and provides that alcohol can only be consumed during adult recreational activities and that people have to be within 10 feet of the fencing surrounding Joe Machado Field.
And that is, yeah.
And that's been the code since...
It's called the Bud Smith.
A long time.
It's a Bud Smith.
I do have, I have one question.
He did that years ago.
Yeah. Currently, are people drinking beer inside of the fence?
Yes.
In the bleachers yet?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Did you just say it was 10 feet anywhere around the fence?
That's what the code says. 10 feet of the fence surrounding the Joe Machado Ballpark.
So, that's inside or out?
Inside or out. That's what it, so, within 10 feet, so I interpret that as 10 feet.
Okay, so... So, now they can drink beer on the public roadway? Because the roadway is within 10 feet of the fence?
Not on the roadway.
Within 10 feet, within 10 feet.
No, within 10 feet of the fence.
Like the bleachers.
Not the roadway.
Well, it doesn't, okay, it doesn't say inside or out, it says within.
It says outside the fence, right?
It says within, within the fence. 10 feet up.
Okay, so, it's not on the roadway?
Well, okay, I'm not going to argue about that, because I, because it seems like when I used to work for the city, there was no allow, there was no allow, and that was there, there was no allowing the consumption of alcoholic beverages, beer inside of the fence at all. That seems to have loosened up, and I guess the within, the way it was written. But, well, anyway, comments, anyone?
This is not for, obviously, not when school functions, correct?
Correct, definitely so.
Yeah, obviously. Does, so, would this change liability, liability issues?
They already have insurance that covers us.
Covers all that.
So, we're covered there.
What about covering athletes when they're out there doing their thing? Wouldn't this, I guess they'd be a little looser, actually.
The only liability that I know for alcohol is when you serve, obviously intoxicated minors and do not charge them.
No, that, that's out of the question.
But councilman, they will not be, if you're, I'm an, if I'm a, a woman softball player, there is still no drinking within the field, on the field.
Okay, what about, who's going to enforce on the outside?
The same people that are chasing after the dogs.
Okay, great. No, that's, that's always something that the sheriffs have...
I'm just, I'm just...
The sheriffs have always come up and drove, drove by, and then make sure that everybody's doing it.
It's up to the contractor, it's up to the contractor, though, in part, to enforce the rule, or if they see a violation to, as a duty to us, to notify us so that that can be dealt with. So, it's not just, I'm going to serve it and, you know, I can do it, and they're not suggesting this.
Where's your brother? Ivan, where's your brother? He's the enforcer.
Well, you're, you're in part.
He's got a badge now, too, doesn't he?
Yeah, he would, he would frighten me if he told me not to do it, I would stop.
So, that's going to be up to you guys to make sure people...
My experience with this is they're going to be, they're going to be approved for specific areas, they're going to approach ABC, they're looking for the patio, they're looking for the bleachers. Ivan's going to be responsible for anything that's served as well as brought in, so it's going to be under his guidance, that that's taken care of. We're going to suggest, there'll be signage that there's going to be no outside alcohol in there, but he'll be responsible to make sure that happens. It'll be part of his license with ABC to regulate that.
What about the, the over-served training? There's a training that, that people that...
That's required. It's, it's already required. Here, they, all of his employees already have to do it.
As a, as a food server.
Uh-huh.
And there's do's and don'ts, the ABC guidelines, and who can serve, who can't serve, so that'll all be spelled out when he goes through the process.
Yeah, that's what Amanda has to say.
No, I just have a quick question, and you probably know the answer. Normally, when a place has an ABC license, you can't bring other alcohol on the road.
Right, that's what they said, they put signs up for that.
Okay.
No, you can bring it on, too, you just can't leave with it. You have to consume it there.
I guess I'll be the one to throw the bug in the ointment, because I'm somewhat concerned. And I, and I'm not picking out any places because I don't like them, because I go, you all know me, and I go to every place, and I'm an equal opportunity imbiber, but...
We're just trying to get you a little further up the canyon, Mayor.
Yeah, I know. So, I guess I have a little concern that I, this is, this is a recreational facility, and that was its intent. And I know that you can have people there up until 10 o'clock. I don't think this should be a bar that, because it could be a very popular place. Now, now I can go drink up Canyon instead of going to the sand trap, or there's no casino dock, or I don't want to go to Pete's, so now I can just go up there and have a six-pack of beer, buy a six-pack. I don't want it, I don't want it to be a bar. It's a recreational facility, and so, and I want your business to be extremely successful, and I would like to look at other ways we can make it successful. I'm just a little bit concerned that this, this is, this is going to be turned into a bar, now law enforcement's going to have to go up, because you're up there drinking, you have a six-pack of beer, you drive your car down the hill, because they will be driving, they're not going to be, those folks up there are not going to be walking. So, now we've got a law enforcement issue and another place for them to patrol seven nights a week till 10 o'clock.
Isn't the license going to be about a fight-eating place, so they've got to have food service?
Well, sure, they might have to, but, but I didn't, I didn't, I thought we were, we had a concessionary, I didn't know we had a new restaurant in town. And I guess that's where I'm having a little bit of a problem, because it's lovely up there, and you can just sit there and drink.
But I think we'd also, we'd also talked about, you know, how do you make a business viable? I mean, you can't just, you can't just expect that they're going to sell enough hot dogs and hamburgers during a high school, you know, soccer game, that's going to be able to allow them to make their rent. And, you know, we're losing more and more affordable establishments to eat in. I mean, we just lost picnic fry, and that's a, that's a big deal.
Well, and I, and I would say we could sure look at the lease, but you were the one who had a, had a little opposition to a place that, to serve beer and wine on Metropole. So, now we've added, when Hermosa wanted to do their little thing. So, now we're going from four, because I counted, and we have 42 establishments to buy, to consume alcohol and purchase alcohol, now we've got 43. I'm just a little concerned that this is a city facility, and I would like it to be a little stricter than, than what we're asking here. And that's just me, there's five of us here.
And it's closed a pier, that's the city property, too.
What's that?
The pier's city property, so we should close down there?
That's not a recreational facility, that's not a sports, I mean, again...
Yeah, I mean, that is a point, I mean, you're mixing drinking and water real close by, so, you know, you've got some, you have some issues there.
We also, I mean, there is, yes, there is an opportunity, too, that, you know, I mean, I've sponsored a softball team before, and I would go up every Thursday night and have a couple beers, and I would bring them myself. And knowing, you know, that, that this is an option, I would certainly much rather go and purchase a beer from you than have to go to Vons, God forbid, and wait in line for 45 minutes to get three beers.
I don't have a problem with that during adult activities.
Right.
And during special events. What I have a problem is they could turn in to a restaurant open from whatever in the morning till 10 at night where beer is served, and I know you're wanting to open up the facility, you talk about having free play. So, now we say, whoops, but this is a free play for kids, so now you don't have it then? I just, again, I'm just not in favor of it being just wide open.
Okay, if I could, and I, I understand, I just want to go back to the municipal code, because what the municipal code says is, is that alcohol can only be consumed during adult recreational activities. So, there has to be an actual adult recreational activity occurring. In addition to that, the municipal code also provides that if you need a permit from the city of Avalon to have an event there, that the, that the recreation department can put additional conditions on that permit.
Well, and I believe, yes, that is the current code, but I don't believe that's what's being asked for today. It would be a change of the code. Correct? Based on what you're proposing, it would be a change of the code, because you'd want to be able to serve me a beer at 8 o'clock at night if you were open and nothing's going on there, correct?
Maybe towards the future, I would be, I'd like to become a full-service restaurant. Like, right now, we never make ends meet, you know what I mean, right now?
I can imagine.
Again, the...
Yeah. No, I, I understand it, I mean, I guess, again, I would rather, because I don't know now, right this moment, what the conditions of the lease are, if he's...
The lease said...
Payment-wise.
The, the, the specific provision of the lease says, "Unless he shall be permitted to sell beer and wine only, beer and wine during adult sporting events and private parties." So, that, I would interpret that as being adult sporting events and adult private parties, in the municipal code, they have to be a recreational program.
No, I understand that. I guess, I don't know, in the, in the agreement that we have, what his rent is, to see how to make...
Collects rent at $4 per square foot.
Yeah, it's based on the square foot, it's $4.
48% of all gross receipts.
So, maybe we change that, because that doesn't seem to be working, that's, I mean, he's paying what a regular restaurant would be paying us. And maybe that's where the, the part of the rub is, because what, on a, on a month where you're not making, your 4%, or your $4 a square foot is costing you how much a month?
Thousand bucks.
A thousand, right?
Eleven hundred?
Twelve hundred bucks.
Twelve hundred bucks?
Yeah.
Hundred and thirty.
And you're paying for your butane, right, and your propane, and blah, blah, blah.
Just 400 and something dollars to fill.
So, I don't, but I don't know if there's another, again, somebody make a motion.
So, just in a real sidebar conversation, he is open to just doing it initially, you know, for initial period of time for, you know, adult sports and the parties that might come through here. We give that, you know, a year try, and then, you know, see how that works for him. I, I think he may have a tough time getting people up there just for a drink or so, and so, he's basically, at this point, opening his cafe around youth sports, adult sports, so maybe seeing more of that, at least initially.
Oh, moved.
Is that a condition, a change of the condition on the approval?
Give it a year.
And we can change that, and if there's something, a problem with it, we can, we can recall that, right?
So, in a sense, what you're doing, and correct me, the mover on this, by the way, I have to remember, I have to write down who the mover is, that, that this would be like a sunset provision unless it's, or it would, could be revisited, it would be revisited in a year, is that what?
Revisited, and at least reflect the, reflect the terms in municipal code.
Thank you.
I wouldn't say a year, I think that's a long time.
Whatever, whatever your, whatever your...
No, I mean, I'm thinking, okay, so, so we say a year, and it's really not working, you're trapped to that year.
You can bail on time, man.
He can bail anytime.
No, he can bail anytime.
No, not, not bail out, but can he bring it back to us to say, okay, the year's not up, but I've tried this for six months, and this ain't working either, let's come back?
Yes.
That's my concern.
Mutual consent of mental...
So, it'll be one year, and then it will, as I understand the motion, it will also reflect that it has to be an adult recreational program.
It can't be a sunset thing, they have no games up there.
So, it's not going to be open as a bar?
It'll serve beer and wine during adult activities at Joe Machado Field.
And private, private parties, adult private parties.
And let me ask you another question, Ivan, about spirits, because I know beer and wine also includes other things now.
Nope.
No.
No.
That's only beer and wine.
No, it's, you're thinking of like wine-based spirits.
Which is under the beer and wine license.
Right.
Wine, margarita.
But they're not a, like, the vodka isn't, you know, a...
It's 24% versus 40, and I've had the tequila at Pete's, and, and it, you get messed up. I mean, it's alcohol.
It's the same thing at a different percentage of alcohol content, I believe, is what the near, my, my restaurant friends are telling me.
It's less than the 40%, it's 26% instead of 40, where a beer is what?
Does this include that?
10.
So, they can...
Up to 10.
Do you have intentions of doing that? Possibly? No?
Okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to...
Well, look at him, asking a question.
No, I know, good.
So, you don't have intentions of doing that? Is that a problem, you have a problem with that? Or you just, we just want to know, right? We need to know that, correct?
Well, because it's four times the alcohol content of a beer.
Okay, so, what you're, you're inquiring, because...
I wouldn't like to see that now.
We need to know what we're responsible for, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I understand.
I wouldn't like to see the spirits now.
I understand why you're asking. I was, I was thinking about the same thing, and you know what? I don't, I think people go up to the ballpark to have a good time, to get their exercise, and maybe have a couple tacos at this point, and I think they, they might need a beer because the salsa's too hot or something, but I don't think people, like Beetle says, I don't think people are going to go up there to necessarily, to get, to get plastered. That's not what they do. They go up there to have a beer, play some ball. I would be concerned, as, as the owner of the facility, that you, that somebody goes up there, and they're already three sheets to the wind, and then they have one of your beers, and then they do something dumb. That's more of...
There's ways of controlling it, maybe we keep only the courtyard section for beer, not the bleachers?
That's the only, that's the only consideration I'm giving you.
Pour the beer in cups, you know what I mean, just to, no bottles allowed or anything like that?
Yeah.
There's, I mean, there's ways of doing it to control it.
Good, good.
And that's what we've been working on.
I'm just trying to allow you to protect yourself and give you a heads up on something that I see could have, could happen, and, and then the city could be liable underneath that umbrella, so...
Madam Mayor?
Okay, good.
Also, could the, during the youth events, could the menu boards be closed, be covered so they wouldn't show the alcohol on it?
Yes, I would cover all that.
Very nice.
That'd be good, I appreciate that, too.
And I'm willing to, and I'm willing to say, I mean, I, you know, I'm not real happy all the time with the sign ordinance, and, and I think the gentleman needs better signage up there, and I think the, the city could look into that and how we could, could create signage, she's all the way up there, the, you know, the facilities to the back, and anyway, okay, but, but that's not part of this, so, go ahead, is there a motion?
Should we?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
All ayes.
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
I'll see you up there for a beer.
Okay, item number eight. Thank you for your patience, you sure learned a lot tonight, though, didn't you?
Mayor, City Council Members, I'm, my name's David Evans, I am the branch manager for Brightview Landscape Services. We have a contract currently with the Island Company, where we have five employees working here in Avalon, maintaining numerous landscape sites.
There you go, ducking the mic, there you go.
Can you hear me better?
Yes.
So, we're maintaining numerous landscape sites within the city of Avalon. We attempted to renew our permit for our F-250 pickup truck that we have here, and it was denied, and I'm here to appeal that, to see if I could at least have use of my vehicle, have the extended permit until September the 31st, which will be the last day of our contract.
Till when, what, what's the date?
September 31st.
Did you say that will be the last of your contract?
Hmm?
Did you say that would be the last of your contract?
That will be the end of our current contract with, with the Island Company.
Oh, oh, you ending your services on Catalina at that point?
I, I don't want to, but I would at least like to be able to have a vehicle here till the end of, of our current contract, and work on seeing if I can get one in, in the future, after the 31st of September.
Do you guys employ any locals that work for your company? From Catalina?
We do. We got two employees.
They, they live here?
Yeah, we got two employees that they make here.
Okay.
I got six employees, too.
We're in the process of, you know, hire more, you know, but, you know, we're looking, and, you know, because they want us to increase the labor, you know, from five to seven, seven men.
And what other contracts do you have currently in town?
I got the Brew Park Apartments in Beacon Hill, I will start the Southern California Edison location, and the Island Company.
And currently, you're, you're getting rid of your things with a, with a golf cart and a trailer?
That, that's correct, which is very difficult, you know, to carry the people and to carry the debris, that's the other stuff.
Especially with summer coming up. It's very difficult.
Yeah. So, basically, what I'm doing right now is sending people walking, let's say, to the pavilion, you know, with the tools, you know, because we can't keep tools at the pavilion. We send another guy to the spa, to the, you know, walking, you know, and this is just scary and ridiculous, you know, having employees and just send them walking, you know, this is not like a real company, you know?
And you put your name, and I understand the first year you, you had use of an Island Company truck, correct?
That's correct, the, the first year.
Okay, and they pulled that because?
And they, they request different, different contract, you know, they said, no, you need to get your vehicle, you need to get your housing, so that's why we ended this.
Okay, okay. And you, yeah, and you signed up on the list for a commercial vehicle? Did you ever sign up here to try to get a commercial vehicle?
I, I signed, but I just get, you know, the temporary...
I, I think I'm seeing that, no, you have not signed up for the commercial vehicle list, okay?
I don't think so, I don't think so, I don't think I did.
So...
That would be the first step, I think.
Yes. So, I know Denise is not here.
So I know Denise is not here. And so, and I spoke with the hearing officer this weekend, actually, at the Contract Cities Conference. And the, the analysis was, is that we have two types of commercial permits. We have the permanent commercial permit, which are for businesses that are doing business and have established contracts. And then we have temporary commercial permits, which are for businesses that are here for a couple of days, maybe a week, doing one project, then getting off. And the hearing officer determined that because there are longstanding contracts both with the Island Company and other entities, that this was a year-round business and did not qualify for a temporary permit. And therefore, under the municipal code as written, a temporary permit was inappropriate and therefore denied the temporary permit. The remedy for him would be to get a, you know, get on the list for a permanent. And.
Which is twenty-five-year waiting list?
Well, again, that's what your municipal code provides.
Well, what is, what is waiting list for the permanent?
Dudley would be able to tell you that.
I know it's a long time. Uh, but, which also means other people are waiting for their.
Exactly.
Yeah, there's people, other people.
Here's Dudley.
Dudley, how long is the wait for the permanent, um, permanent vehicle permit?
Commercial? I've been the vehicle clerk now for 11 years and I've processed three. Um, there's probably a hundred and seventy people on the list right now. A lot of those names are probably void, but the, the only ones that I've handed out was Deacon's Electric. They left the island and just let their vehicles go. And the other one was, who's the guy that had the gold company?
Dave Stein.
Dave Stein. He passed away in nothing thing. Because what'll happen is somebody, if they want to go out of business or they want to sell their business, then they can apply to the vehicle hearing officer for a transfer of a business that's doing, doing like kind. So you have a lot of people that are waiting on the list right now. I've always, I've been trying to encourage Jose to just keep pounding the Island Company if they're going to have a big contract with. Yeah. But they, what, what, what makes it a little stickier though now is that we find out they have more than just contracts with the Island Company. So they also have work with other people. So it's not just a, a one-off type of business. They're doing other businesses throughout town. So, um, and, yep, well, I got to say, we did give you a little extra time because we were looking for a hearing officer for a while.
So if you guys have.
These, these guys have been very nice working with me and I've been trying to be nice working with them, too. But they're kind of, they're in a very sticky position right now.
I think there's a lot of people that are in that position as well, correct? So you have two permanent employees. Did you ever think of getting, having your permanent employees get golf cart-sized vehicles that you can use, uh, in place of your vehicle? Because what I'm finding right now is what I'm seeing is it, there's, there's a hundred and seventy other people ahead of you guys that, that, that want the same thing you want. And, um, I don't know, it's just hard to give it to everybody. And I know you guys work hard. You got some good jobs over here.
I, I guess my question is with the hundred and seventy people that are there on the list, I mean, truly, they're waiting for a big vehicle or a permit, but how are they doing their business? How are those hundred and seventy people doing business? Or do they even have current business life?
Golf carts, mini trucks?
Yeah, a lot of the people that are on that list already have vehicles. They would just like to add to their fleet, in, in many cases. We do have, a few years back, we tried to make the playing field a little bit even for the folks that have businesses here. They're able to take advantage of the temporary permit process, but they have to pull the permit for a specific job. And when that job is done, that car vehicle has to go someplace else. It has to be parked off-street in a lot, in a yard somewhere. So, case in point, Hernandez Tile, I don't know if you know, not this Hernandez. Hernandez Tile, he needed a small truck to do his work. He comes in on a, well, about once a month, pulls something for three or four days, but he has to pay for it, just like these folks when they come over. And then when that job is finished, that specific job is finished, the truck has to go away. And he's got a private place to park it. So it can't be used for anything besides that. For a while, Padilla's Landscaping was doing that until he moved his blue sticker over to, to his full-size vehicle. So he doesn't need to do that anymore. But, so we've allowed locals to do that. But again, it's just for one specific job. It's not for, I'm going to bounce over here today, bounce over there tomorrow.
Do you gentlemen have off-street parking for your vehicle? A place to put it?
Yeah, we ran the, uh, jar, small jar over a pavilion. We put it in, yeah. We use those vehicles just for work, basically.
Okay. So this is actually turning into a permanent, um, vehicle. It seems to me like almost, it's working that way. And I, I'm, I'm kind of conflicted right now in, in that my thought process is saying there's other people that want vehicles on this island that have been here a lot longer than you guys and they can't have them. Although they can do it like George Hernandez, I, or Mr. Hernandez does it. And they can do it job by job, but then you have to pay for a, a parking area. So I'd like some direction from the rest of the council, or the city staff to understand where, where can we go from here?
Well, the appeal, the, you know, the, the, the decision of the hearing officer, he said that he denied the application to renew the temporary permit. And it was on the basis that the, that the permit is intended to be granted only for a specific project and not a substitute for a general-use commercial vehicle permit, and that applicant will need to sign up onto a commercial vehicle waiting list. You know, that, that was the, that was the hearing officer decision. And of course, it could be appealed. And, and, you know, I guess if you could, if you could somehow differentiate this, but I, I don't know.
The proposed truck is now being utilized on a permanent basis and not for a specific project.
That's the issue.
Yeah, that is a big issue.
I'll just throw my opinion out there. I am not in favor of supporting the appeal of the decision. I, I, we've heard for years, different opportunities for people that want to have a full-size vehicle to do their business here, you know, people that have lived here for twenty, thirty years and they've been denied the exact same situation. I think the, the list, whether I agree or don't agree with it, you know, the list is what it is. And there are a lot of people who have wanted to better their business, expand their business, or, or create a business that haven't otherwise been able to or haven't had that opportunity. So I would find it very difficult to find your particular business or your circumstances extraordinary that would change my mind on the basis of the hearing officer's appeal.
I have to agree with Cindy, but I also think that there's some light in this day because if you have two permanent employees here, they can have golf carts. I work out of a golf cart. I'm a handyman. People say, you need a bigger truck. I, I put ladders on it. I put paint rollers. I, it's stacked with trash, trash cans. It looks funky, but it does the job and, and I get to make a living out of it. And I can't, and that's the way a lot of us have to do business. And it's just for the simple fact that there's no room for me to park my truck anywhere on, on the streets. And I use the vehicle to go in the interior, but that's a different thing. That's recreation. And I've been here for fifty years plus. So before there was a problem with vehicles, that's when I was here. So there's some, there's some light in the day here. So you, you can look at it that way.
I, I would just ask, just a question. We do have a golf cart that we have a permit for. I was wondering, could I bring in another golf cart that's a little more better for us to use in regards to, you know, how many people I can put in it? My, my current golf court only fits two. I was wondering, could I switch the, our current permit on our golf cart to another veh, uh, utility vehicle golf cart?
Yeah, you could. I, I don't know how much bigger you're going to be able to get, though. You're still going to have to conform to the size limits of a golf cart.
It's hundred and twenty inches?
Hundred and twenty inches by fifty-five. Because you would want a gas one, I'm sure. So that's going to be the outside limit on your, on your golf cart.
But it can still attach a trailer to the back of it?
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah, they could tow, they could tow a trailer. The only, the only other off, off-the-wall option, too, and I've, offices up to Jose, and I think they've looked around, is looking at some of the other landscape people in town and that have a full-size vehicle and see if they'd be willing to sell their business and apply for a transfer. And I think they may have approached to one or two people.
There was another comment made that, that you could, because I, because you have, end up with a lot of debris and whatever, and you have your tools. But somebody said, well, why can't they do like Eddie Vega and get a Segway and put one of those little things behind it and doodle that around, until you have to go to the dump? Because then you've got a problem.
But when you tow a trailer, that has to be off, that, that can't be parked on the street at night, correct?
No.
No. The trailer has, yeah, that should, that's got to be tucked away so you can have a golf cart up to, I believe, a hundred and twenty inches, because you're probably going to have a, um, a gas golf cart. And, because that's most efficient. And, so you will have to get rid of your other cart before you, you know, get something else. But you guys have, you can still stay in business.
You can only have one commercial autoet per.
Yeah. Oh, this is a commercial you're talking about? I was going to say, because you guys have, you said you have two.
They have a, since 2014, they've had a, a commercial autoet.
Okay. Well, I'm saying, if you have a residence, if you have two residents working for you, you can have them have a vehicle under that umbrella. I mean, not under your company name, but they can have their own personal vehicles, if they're residents, if they're actual legitimate residents. And I'm not for any more vehicles over here, but you guys are in a quandary here and I'm just giving you some suggestions. I mean, so.
That's good. Thank you very much.
I will make a motion to uphold the vehicle hearing officer's denial decision. Sorry.
All right.
Second?
Second.
Yeah.
Who's the second, please?
Joe.
Only Joe, who was it?
Richard.
Oh, it's Richard.
Richard.
Okay.
In voting, yes.
Thank you.
All ayes.
Okay. Now we're going to whip through the rest of this, right? Okay. Are we on, oh, item nine? No.
Yes.
Nine.
Yeah.
Nine, okay.
Item nine is a resolution of the city affirming the city's commitment to diversity, inclusivity, inclusiveness, safeguarding civil rights, safety, and dignity of all people. This is modeled after some cities that have adopted resolutions in support of immigrants and asked that the, the immigrants be treated fairly, respectfully, and that be provided the rights without regardless of their, with, without respect to their immigration status. The ordinance is crafted, complies with federal and state law in terms it doesn't commit the city to violating any provisions of state law, but is also broad enough that it.
Federal law?
Federal and state.
Okay.
And, but all, but is also broad enough to express the city's support of people who are residents of Avalon.
Well, I want to thank you for simplifying this from the original version.
Yeah.
Well, you know, Mayor, I, it is, it also, though, it, it really says what your values as a community is. You, you respect diversity, you respect differences, you, you, that you will, you will show respect of the rights of all residents of our community. And that's a pretty, that's a pretty strong statement of what I understand your values to be, so.
We absolutely understand and back that. And, and we have friends and neighbors that are all here. And they've been allowed here under the umbrellas of many different presidential administrations for the last thirty years. I can't deny that. I'd like to know, this doesn't cover people like child molesters and violent criminals and white beaters, right?
No, 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 no.
Because I don't want to protect those people if they're not from this country and they're not contributing in a positive way. I want to protect the people that are here, that we know live here, our neighbors, our friends, some of our families. I, I, and, and I don't want to be a safe city either. I just want to, to make a res, this is a resolution, correct?
Yeah, yes, exactly. This is not what has been deemed a sanctuary city resolution. Our firm has two, has, has one person that is on a two-person task force with the, the state on these issues. And there are a variety of resolutions that go from sanctuary city, like San Francisco has, to something not even as strong as this. So we have.
I'll tell you why I say this, because I don't, I don't want our sheriffs to be afraid to make the hard arrests for people that don't deserve to be here and aren't contributing. That's, that's the problem I have. Because there's been a broad line that's been drawn as far as this particular issue's gone. And I don't want that broad line drawn. I, I'd want to make sure that those particular people in those categories that I mentioned
Right.
don't have a free pass.
Of course not.
They do not under this resolution.
Right.
Councilman Sampson, I think maybe you haven't been watching the news very much because the problem is not with people getting arrested, people getting arrested for things like murder or, you know, what we would think of as being violent, serious crimes and then finding out that they're not citizens and being deported. That's not the problem. It's people who have been here, have been working, and they're picked up and they don't have a driver's license and they're deported. Or they wrote a check and they didn't have enough money in their account and they're deported. That's what's.
You know one person personally that has been deported?
Not from here.
I do. Yes, actually, I do. I do.
Yeah. You know what? You know somebody who's been deported personally?
I do.
Really?
Yeah. A friend of mine who had somebody working for them as a housekeeper.
And there was no other problems with them?
Was picked up because she was at someplace where somebody else had a warrant. They picked everybody up and everybody was deported. And that's why I asked you whether you're watching the news. Because the, the directive that's come down from this administration is deport them all.
No, that's not, they're not deporting them all. Believe me.
Okay. So I, I just have some question. I, you and I clearly don't agree or are on the same page about this.
Absolutely not.
So my only concern is to make sure that everybody understands that all you're doing is a kumbaya. We're all standing in solidarity. You're not giving any direction to your police department. So effectively, whatever the LA County Board of Supervisors dictates is the procedures that they're to follow is what they're going to follow.
Yeah.
And you're not giving your staff any direction that if ICE comes in and they want to see your records or any kind of information that you have, or at the hospital or anything else, they're going to kind of just make it up as they go along. Because I would have liked to have seen that at least it says, we're going to require a warrant before we give any information that the city holds. Because there have been instances where people were told you have to turn over information when in fact they could have said, you need to have a warrant to do that. But.
What, what we would do, what I would do absent other direction, is if there was a request made for information that was unusual, let's say was unusual in, in, in its sense, I would, we would immediately consult with the city attorney's office to see whether we had a legal duty to, to, to do that or not. And, and under what circumstances we had a duty to comply. And then that advice would, we would use to comply with that, with that, with that matter.
I would say that if, if any individual asks for information that is a public record, we are required to turn it over, regardless of whether it's the INS, whatever.
Public record, that's right.
Right, right.
Yeah.
But, but if, I mean, I hear what you're saying about this being a kumbaya moment. And I think it's important for us to stand up and say that, you know.
I don't mean to belittle that. It's a solidarity statement and that's, that's significant. I shouldn't, I don't mean to belittle it. I just think we need to understand that you may be in situations that you didn't think you were going to be in and this is not going to address that.
So I agree and support that. But I also support that if there is a crime committed and somebody is under an illegal immigration status, let's not have our taxpayers pay for it. Let's, you know, do what we need to do.
And that is not really.
I mean, I, I don't know. That's not what we're saying here. What we're saying here is, you know, that we, we are affirming our commitment and we're saying that everybody needs to be treated equal regardless.
Okay, okay. And then the only other thing, just so you know, because the courts are doing their job and the threat to cut off federal funds has been overturned. So, you know, whatever billy club you might feel is over your head, it's not there at this moment, at least.
Well, it's.
Well.
Thank you.
It's overturned by the, the trial court judge. It's, was heard by the Ninth Circuit yesterday and it hasn't gone all the way to the Supreme Court.
I agree with that.
So the current law is yes.
Yes. Okay.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, you can make a motion.
I'd like to move a resolution to the city council, city of Avalon, commitment to safeguarding the civil rights, safety, and dignity of all people regardless of their immigration status.
I second that. Further comment? Call for the vote.
Can't wait to press all my buttons.
Hang on. When it?
Five.
Five.
Okay. Item number 10, encroachment permit for installation of a photo booth.
Ah, yes.
I am going to abstain from item number 10, not because I have a financial obligation, but because, um, the participant is an extended family member. So, on the appearance of any impropriety, I'm going to abstain.
Okay.
Good evening, or good night. I will say. So, my name is Shauna Cassidy, I think I know everybody here, and I'm here to present a new idea for a Catalina scene machine, that's kind of the name I've given it. It's a high-tech photo booth that uses, uh, is a, provides an interactive visitor experience that is equipped with the latest green screen technology. If anybody doesn't know what green screen technology is, I can explain that. Um, the idea was kind of born, as you know, I'm a photographer and I own the event-based photo booth here in town. Um, as we get into a more digitally conscious age, people don't ever have anything printed anymore. So, I've noticed with doing the event-based portion of the, uh, business, that people really enjoy having something they can go and put on their desk at work, or on their refrigerator or something, so kind of progressed into having something that would be a great marketing opportunity for the island. Um, and this would be a standalone stationary booth that is, uh, considered a theme park booth, so it's all weatherproof, weather resistant, but inside is the green screen technology. So, the idea would be that visitors could come and choose what scene that they would like to be in, from Catalina, and put themselves in that scene, so that could be, you know, a field of buffalo, in front of the memorial, anywhere. You could do an airport in the sky, anything that you want to take pictures of, underwater scene, um, it's outfitted with, uh, you can do cust, any kind of custom logos, so you can do Catalina 2017, it can be hashtag friendly, you can do custom overlays, so your underwater scenes can have, you know, gear baldies along the bottom, um, can pretty, do much anything you want to do with that, within the design portion of it. The outside of it, which is my big concern, being from the island, I would want it to be extremely classy and elegant, and to fit into the existing location that it would be in. So, I've given you a couple of choices, you've seen that I pulled the Leos Sumner site, just from getting the feedback from people, that wasn't a good site, I think, for people.
Was or was not?
Was not a good site. I got back, a lot of feedback from that, so, which is totally understandable. Um, the two locations, general locations that I kind of narrowed it down to was the pier, which I know also comes with its own set of, uh, complications, as well as the area down by the ATM. So, I think that's.
Well, I, may I just say that, although I'm not a photo booth expert, uh, but what, what I think was impressive, I've never met, um, Ms. Cassidy before, but was just the, with the taste in which, in which the proposals are, how attractive they are, and, uh, and complimentary to adjacent areas, that's, that was just something I think that we all were impressed and staffed with.
Mm-hmm. And it doesn't have to look like what you see there, I just was trying to give you the sense that that would be something that would be very important to me, is that it would blend in, I didn't want anything, you know, gaudy or anything that would stand out, and anything that would be on the outside, I already, my logo already for the photo booth is art deco, so it already kind of fits in with the environment. I tried to make it look like the casino, that's why I printed the color copies, since I figured that was probably more important than the black and whites. Um, and then when the pier became an idea, I went home real quick and obviously changed the complete look of the entire thing, so it fits in with the pier.
Right.
I like the pier idea, I know that that involves the Coastal Commission, which, um, I've been a little bit in contact with, I had a long talk today with the assistant to, uh, Mr. Posner, so that, I don't know, he hasn't had a favorable initial response, but I'm certainly willing to plead my case, if that's a possibility. The space I was looking for was just on the other side of the chamber building, as you see it, there's that nook right there. I believe Wayne Griffin also had a, something similar to this at some point in time, it wasn't quite as elaborate, but it did have the same kind of idea about it. Um, it does fit in that space, the, uh, rendering is a little deceiving, I believe that it does fit all the way in the back, whereas my Photoshop skills aren't that great, it looks like it sticks out, but it actually does not stick out.
Is that a space there, or is it, take, would you have to move, is the bench there?
It's, it's, I ventured it, it's about the size of a half or three quarters of a bench, so you would have to take out one bench.
So, you gotta take out a bench?
Mm-hmm.
I like beach location number one, to tell you the truth, and how would we charge for the, uh, for square footage? So, you have about five square feet? No, maybe 10 square feet? I don't know.
It's 70 inches by 36 inches, it's actually a pretty small footprint.
Let me ask you a question, if, if you, because even if it went for the Coastal Commission, it'd probably take a while.
All right, that's fine.
And this gentleman, probably Posner, hasn't seen that probably?
Um, he did.
You actually got him pictures?
I, we play phone tag quite a bit, and then Mr. Jenkins has helped me a little bit facilitate some communication with him, um, and then I think he was tired of our phone tag and then pushed me off to his assistant, who I spoke with for, at length today, and she was saying, um, obviously it's a committee decision from their standpoint, but she said, because, I mean, I know it is on wheels, so it makes it somewhat temporary, but as Amanda has pointed out, that it is, I, with the idea that it would be there year-round, you know, because it is, um, you know, a year-round thing, so.
I guess, to change, I guess the thing is, I mean, I, if you, I'd like, I like the pier, well, I like all the locations, I really like the pier locations personally, but if you, in the interim or until whenever, could you start with the one look, and then, how easy is it to change the look if in a year or so you got, uh, permission to put it on the pier?
So, I'd be certainly willing to look into that, the pier, when I looked at it, it's powder coated metal is the actual material, so the company that I'm working with and talking with the distributor, I can go a route, many different routes on trying to customize the look of it, you know? Um, I thought about the pier, and I looked long at the building that it's next to with the chamber, and it's, you know, it's kind of all wood, you know, paneling, so I didn't know if it was something that I could almost build, you know, a very lightweight shell around it, which actually kind of works in that regard, because then I could leave that in, the inside core blank, and to be, to be customized at a later date.
Oh, okay.
So, that's one that I thought. And then, um, you know, obviously, I could do like a kind of a barn door, that, you know, you could open and close if you wanted to close it, you know, for the evenings, but I would, you know, probably, I could do something like an outside, which would also give it further protection from the elements.
Right. So, if you, if you started with the casino look first, and then, whoops, now you can move to the pier, whatever, then you could change the front of that again?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty costly to customize, so it'd be nice to sort of know what way it would go.
Right.
Um, but, but there is some room for that, you know, because just based on that thought that I had with the pier idea, that you could, I could almost, you know, build like a, you know, a little thing that would fit just around it.
Right, right, right.
That would hook onto it, you know, in some way.
So, you start with this, and then if you ended up going to the pier, then you could make your thing around it.
If I could do that. Um, I don't know how long, uh, Councilman Olson said that with the Coastal Commission, it's quite some time, time.
At least a year, probably?
Six months to a year.
Yeah, six months to a year.
So, it's not a.
But, I'm trying to figure out what their beef would be, I guess obstruction of a view.
Exactly.
But, I mean, you, we've, we've already got a, a roof and everything right there.
You've already got the roof, and there's actually like a beam of wood down that back part, which already kind of doesn't.
Yeah, when, if I may, um, when, uh, Mr. Posner, I forward it's the, just the information, because this was one of the sites, and I, with I asked, um, Ms. Cassidy if she had any problem with just asking, and she says, well, that's a Coastal Commission decision, and I said, well, you know, as staff, do you have any idea what they would do? We sent some pictures, and I think he gave kind of a, uh, I'm, I'm not sure he appreciated that it, it is, it is not a permanent structure that is secured, nailed down to the pier, but they did cite the issue of view shed, the view, the view shed, um, and, uh, that was, that was the reason that he didn't think that, uh, the commission would be favorable, uh, and, and that was more of a preliminary kind of a, a commentary that he made.
Do you think we could look back in the archives and see if we could find a picture of when there really was something there before?
It was a lot smaller.
It was a lot smaller. I mean, it was probably, maybe a little bit bigger than.
Oh, oh, you remember what it was?
They put that roof on?
Yeah. Had that it did have cameras, so people could stand in front of the camera, and the casino would be behind them, and it would email them out, and it was.
Is there something wrong with these other two locations? Because I hate to take away any bench, you know, or something on the pier, or any kind of a view like that, I don't want to block anything.
Well, the one near Leos, I understand.
Not the Leos location, I'm talking about the two locations out, out, the one by the bank kiosk, and then the one, um, facing the, um, the little clothing shop going out to, um, the mall, so those two locations, I would seriously have no problem with right now, um, immediately, uh, and then we could talk later in the future if you get some, some, some go-ahead from the PUs, from, um, the, um, the Coastal Commission about this, this location on the pier, but I don't like blocking anybody's view, I think we're putting up too many things that block people's views. The palm trees are here, um, behind, um, location, beach location number one, and then the kiosk location, I, I don't think that would be a big problem, but it looks like it might stick out maybe a foot, and we're talking about tens of thousands of people walking in and out on that boardwalk, I think that could be a problem, so beach location number one to me sounds, looks like the best place for this right now, and I would vote to have this, um, in that location, like I said.
Is number one where the, where the, um, paper racks are?
Uh, beach location number one.
Because I'm looking at this and not at this.
Here, I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you beach location number one, here.
My only dilemma with beach, with the location number one, and I haven't yet, I've spoken with the city works, the public works department about some of the other locations, um, is power, so at the moment, I think that is, might be the only one of the spots that may need power to it. Uh, the public works department seemed to feel that that wasn't an issue, but I have not asked about that specific location. The ATM one was a little easier, as far as the walkthrough on that, I've sat at that and looked at that visually, and it's hard to explain, but I tried, if you look at the, um, kind of drawing I did of that spot, it does, it could, it doesn't, it sticks out only a few more inches already than the existing newspaper racks.
Do you like that location better than?
The only thing about that spot that I liked is I thought it, it tucked itself into that, into that bush, which was kind of nice, and so I felt like maybe I would get a little bit, people wouldn't feel like it stuck out so much, if, in that other, either one.
She liked that better than beach location number one?
Um, I just thought it, like, it stuck, it was in a little bit. Um, obviously, weather in the wintertime in that corner, sometimes the surge comes in quite a lot, whereas back in beach location number one, it's back a little ways, so that's also a thought just that I had with that. I mean, that's not a common surge, but it does happen, we've seen it in that corner, sometimes it does get backed in that way.
Well, you have, you will have a cover for this when you want to get it out of the elements or anything, or is it gonna be weatherproof?
It is, it is all weatherproof, I'm actually, the machine that I'm, I've spoken with the company, it was actually customizing a machine for me that has the two capabilities of the green screen and the complete, uh, weatherproofing of it, it's like one that you would see at an amusement park. Um, I do know that, based on the, uh, information that I've received from the company that has one in the Santa Cruz area, as well as one in the San Diego area, that salt and moisture is a concern, so I'll have to get, you know, like, the packs to put inside and just try to keep it, uh, definitely as clean and, uh, well-kept as possible, to try to keep the salt off of it and that kind of thing.
Yeah, that'll be a problem for sure, anywhere downtown.
Yeah.
I mean, but if we knew there was really gonna be some foul weather, you could throw some kind of, or you, or you could throw a cover on it, right?
Or you can throw a cover on it, yes.
And you're closer to electricity, um, by the, by where the newspaper racks.
ATM one, is that one right there, I think, I mean, there is, seems to be a, a power source there.
Right.
The other place, again, the public works guys seem to feel that there wasn't much of an issue getting power to any of the places, but I have to ask that question.
Okay, is there any, any comments from the community? Including Amanda, our, our leading director?
I think, um, Mr. Jenkins alluded to it, and Shauna did too, the only comments we have had were not in favor of the Leos location, and I think that's why Shauna went ahead and just pulled that one from consideration, but we have not heard any negative feedback from anyone else about the other two.
May I make a motion?
In fact, we heard about positive ones from the community about the pier location, but then there's the Coastal Commission.
Right, okay.
Issue that.
You ready?
Yeah, yeah, um, make a motion, please. Uh, approve an encroachment permit for a three-year period of time for the installation of a photo booth at one of two locations identified in the report. Um, I'm gonna specify those locations right now, which is, um, newspaper location number one and beach location number one, those two, um, you choose, um, Shauna. Um, identified in the report, excluding the location of the pier, the permit could be renewed if all parties are satisfied with the arrangement.
Comment?
Comment?
Comment.
Um, we discussed, and I, I think that we're opening up a giant bag of worms here. When we release public property for private commercial use, we will get more and more and more requests.
We might do beach space number one right now, and then we'll get a request for beach space number two, and we'll get a request for the hamburger stand, we'll get a request for the hot dog stand, we'll get a request for the ice cream cart, and it's just, it's too congested, I've actually stopped by the location this, this afternoon while the cruise ship was in, and there's a lot of people walking by there. I mean, it's, it's not, it's, there's better places in, I think there's better places in town that will have less adverse effect on public property than, you know, public property. I mean, there's the Plaza, there's the Metro Polo Marketplace, there's the Scans, it's just, it doesn't belong on public, public property, in my, in my opinion. Also, there is a couple of conditions in the municipal code that we have not been addressed, which is, um, amounts of insurance.
That hasn't been identified in here?
No.
Well, I'm sure we will, that's what we would do.
Yeah, what, why isn't that identified in the staff report? The amount of insurance, if they need insurance, or?
It's the, like, the housing.
What about the, the simple fact that it's, um, so it's square footage only, and it's not tied?
I'm afraid it gets a percentage.
So, and a percentage?
Or a percentage, or.
Or what's, whatever's greater?
Standard is, has been 4,000, or 4, um, $4 to square foot or 8%.
Okay, so, um, beach, I wanted to go to beach location number one, because it seems to me like it's just the best out-of-the-way place. Um, the newspaper, the newsstand area number one, I, I just, I, I, anything that encroaches the walkway, I have a problem with, even if it's a couple inches. Um, but, you know, I wanted to be pretty loose about this, because you, just because it's you, and you made a good presentation. Um, I do like beach location number one, and like I said, I would approve that tonight in a heartbeat, so I want to give you the opportunity, um, to understand what, what we're dealing with, because it's, Councilman Olson makes a good point, um, although we don't have to approve anything that we don't find is aesthetically and monetarily and socially acceptable to the general public.
Right on.
Um, I don't mind this in beach location number one, there's nothing there, it's not blocking the view of anything, but I respect Councilman Olson's opinion on this, not to the point to where I agree with him totally, wholeheartedly, but I respect it in that I'm listening to what he's saying, and that we're gonna probably get more of these in the future, um, you're the first one, and there's not gonna be many more allowed, I'll tell you this right now, if, if this passes.
So, you're saying not where the, you're not saying where the, where the racks were, but on the.
I don't like it where the racks are at, just because that's, that's a part of the walkway, and it does stick out into the walkway, even if it's an inch, that walkway is where every single person comes into town and leaves, and it can be 10 feet over to the other side, and every single person that goes into town and leaves town is gonna, actually, I think you're gonna make more money at this location too, because everybody's gonna see it on their way out of town, and they're gonna go, quick, a quick picture before we go.
Well, and the thing is, that, that she also said, that, that, um, Ms. Cassidy said was also that it might get a little less water if it's at that, at second location, so, so I don't think that's a deal breaker on your.
So, the only thing I would change out of my, out of my, um, out of what I said would[1782.47] out of what I said would just be I would like to specify that it'd be beach location number one. And, and then you're going to, you're going to have to work with city staff in order to run some electricity over there, which I don't think is going to be a big problem. Might cost you some money, but you'll be able to do business.
All right.
Insurance.
An insurance?
So the, the, the two issues that are blank in the encroachment permit are how much insurance do you want to require? And then we usually require a security permit or cash payment. And that's to reimburse the city for the cost of any infrastructure that needs to be put in and the, the cost of removing that, the estimate. And so, for instance, when the island company put in the vaults, we required them to put enough, to put up enough, a bond sufficient enough that if they ever took out the vaults, that the bond would cover the cost for that.
Okay, so how much could we be talking?
Uh, we, you could, we, we could work with the public works to determine what that amount was for the insurance. And so a, a bond is usually the cost, for the cost of bond is one percent. So let's say it's a hundred thousand bucks. That'd be a thousand dollar cost to purchase a bond.
I can check with my insurance plan too and figure out that out. Currently have and what I would need to get.
Your municipal code says a million dollars insurance unless you specify otherwise.
I think we have to comply with all terms and conditions in the municipal code with regard to use of public property. So I think the city attorney is saying that we, we have to comply with whatsoever in the code in terms of insurance or.
Million dollars for a photo booth?
Well, again, your municipal code says it's a million dollars unless the council specifies otherwise.
Okay, so you'll be, you'll be, you'll have a phone number there in case something goes wrong with somebody that they can call you to complain and stuff. And you can see this from the house too, right?
Aren't you monitoring it?
No, but I mean.
You can't?
She'll have some special techie device available to see.
You can walk down the road and see that from the house. I know that.
It's not too far.
That way you get, you guys can keep an eye on it, you know? If, if it, if it passes. Yeah, is it lit? Is it backlit or is there any lighting on it?
There's not at all. And when I was looking at one of the other locations, I had thought about maybe asking about like a solar light on a tree or just something, just to kind of out, you know, keep it at nighttime. I know with that location down there, I did think about the contingent of just like the basketball courts. And, you know, that kind of crew that's there late at night. So having a little bit of a light, even if it's just like a little solar pin light or something, just to light it up. I'm not sure that location, that was the one thing about the Leo's location, which I, I know was, you know, a tough hill to begin with, but it just, it doesn't give me any night traffic except for those last few minutes going to the boat. So it could be an easier close at, a little earlier in the night, so. I don't know if that answered your question.
Do you have to open it and close it?
No, right now it's, it's open completely, but I, you know, that was a question that I expected to get asked or had, that I've thought about is just like vandalism and so forth. It's pretty well protected. I've been advised by the distributor, you know, you, all cash gets, you know, collected every day and so that it kind of doesn't make it very interesting. If it does seem to be a problem or if I am concerned about it, I've looked at a couple of different things. You know, just a simple barn door, you know, that just opens and closes. Or even I looked into custom roll gates, you know, just to pull down.
You might want to think about that late at night because people might want to go in there and do things that aren't.
Something that you don't want.
Take pictures of it.
Yes, take other types of pictures.
And because there's no traffic there at night, it's an easy thing. I mean, I can just close it after the last boat leaves and.
I think that would probably be smart to protect your assets.
Probably.
I, I'm curious what, what a million dollar policy costs for something, what, what, I mean.
My petty cab business.
I know. I'm curious what that would be. And I, I mean, so if you have a restaurant or you have a jet ski business, you have a million dollars worth of coverage?
Yeah, I, I think.
If you have a photo booth, you have a million dollars.
I think we would talk to Parsak and, and just, just run it by them and see what they, and then there's any change, you know.
You could, you could, it's whatever amount the city manager determines or the council. Council gives direction to console with Parsak and have Parsak come up with the number.
Petty cabs a million and a half, but that's, it's all good.
But you're carrying passengers?
Yes, so.
And fast Scion's going by now, but you have to be careful.
Speed of sound. I entertain a motion.
There is a motion.
And there's one on the table.
All second. Comments from the community? Call for the vote. Hey, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Nothing showed up for.
Okay.
Did she get it? Can, can we?
Do a vote again?
Yeah, we didn't see that. Did you clear it? I don't know how, how does the thing work?
I have no idea. I'm not using. Only, that's all Lisa. Anybody voted?
Yeah.
Uh, that looks like a three, one, one. So there is one extension, uh, one.
Oh, only no. One, one no.
Three in favor.
So it passes. Three in favor, one.
So it passes.
Okay.
One, one.
And Mr. Hunky is back with item number 11.
I am back with item number 11. I can give you my 45 minute presentation or we can do this in two minutes.
Let's try the two. Because I think we're all going to say the same thing.
Anybody have a motion? No? A little more?
I could give five minutes of direction if you'd like.
Uh, thank you for hearing this item. I know it's been on the council's radar as long as I've been here and I think for some of you longer than that. The recommendation here is the city council consider an ordinance to ban the use of polystyrene products for food service and direct staff to return on June 20th, 2017 for the first reading of the proposed polystyrene ban ordinance and hear community put input on that matter.
Staff.
Let me ask you, before you go, we have some people in the audience, polystyrene people. Leslie?
Let him, let him, were you finished? I don't think you were finished, were you?
I, I can, you've all got the staff report. I can add. I can read more of what I've got in it already that your manager has seen or we can open this up for discussion?
I'd like to open it up for discussion. Leslie, Marner?
I would appreciate being consulted first as well.
Oh, excuse me.
The, there isn't an ordinance, this isn't an ordinance. This is just the, the idea of an ordinance, which we already directed staff that we wanted, this ordinance. So there has been a significant amount of information received already on other ordinances. There's, I sent all of the information that I had received to the city to be distributed for all of the council members. There's already several ordinances in play that could easily be filed safe as and tweaked. The city, I mean, there, there's just so, so many of them. There's, I think 70 some cities in the state of California alone that have already covered all the law. So I, I guess I was confused as to why we didn't actually have an ordinance when we presented this item. But that being said, we'd already agreed to do an ordinance. So are, are we?
I, I, what I, what I did here is I just laid out some of the parameters. So we looked at, at some timeframes to see if you were okay with that. Get it out to the community to see what kind of response we've got. We've got some emails. We've got four or five emails that have come through. I think you were a part of those. The public, it's been positive. I've reached out to Vaughn's, met with the manager on a couple of occasions, had another conversation with the day. They're willing to do whatever, you know, the city directs them to do and will do it. I've talked to some of the restaurant, the food vendors and they're certainly open to it. It's going to be a cost. It's going to be a cost. It's passed along. Certainly wanted to share and take this opportunity that in talking to Levant, will hold some workshops in terms of some of the products that are out there. I've got sample products. We can talk about costs. We can talk about different products. We can look at opportunities that Levant is more than happy to provide, you know, the material. Talked to some of the vendors and they've got, they've got six months' worth of product on hand that they need to get through. It's all, you know, it's pre-purchased. They do it year in advance. So they get bulk, you know, bulk purchasing. Some of it's printed. They want the opportunity to, to go through that. So we're going to fast track it from here on out. I think you see a pretty, pretty quick, you know, we'll be back at next council meeting. I work with the attorney. We've got a boilerplate template that we can use for an ordinance to continue to move this through.
Yeah, our firm just worked at all the research and drafted a very vigorous ordinance for the city of Davis, which is a pretty progressive city. And so I provided that ordinance to Mr. Hunky.
And you have the, you got the one from San Mateo as well and the one.
Manhattan.
Manhattan Beach as well. San Mateo was the other one that I sent over.
Yeah, there's, like I said, there's 99 plus of them out there and that's just continuing to grow. So it's not something that's new that's out there and.
Okay, so we know everybody's doing this. Can we get to the brass tacks of what's going on here? So we're, we're banning containers that are made out of styrofoam, right?
Polystyrene, so.
Okay, what, what about, okay, so we banned plastic bags, but everybody still uses them in town and Vaughn still uses them. We're banning styrofoam. What is going to take its place? Paper, correct?
Uh, there's, there's paper. I mean, there's, you know.
Is there anything else? Is there any other potential material that is going to be put on the market that we don't know about and that is, we don't know about the scientific evidence of whether it's going to harm the environment or not? And, and what about straws? I mean, straws has never been mentioned. I pick up a lot of trash around the island. I find a lot of straws. They're, they're, they're plastic. Are we doing anything about straws?
At this point, we were asked to look at the polystyrene ban. So you asked the types of things we're doing. We're looking for things that are returnable. You know, items that can be used over and over again, things that are recyclable, things are biodegradable and things are degradable. So that would be the product that would be approved for use within this ban.
Scares me that we, we, we make these ordinances. I, I'm not against it. I'm just saying, okay, so we're not going to sell styrofoam ice chests anymore, but we're going to sell these other products that are made in China and God knows what's inside of them that makes the ice stay cold and ice chests. I, I'm saying we're going in a direction where, I, I'm not sure where we know where we're going. I know it's not good, so, so we'll start here. I guess we're starting, this is a starting point, correct? I don't know. Are we setting an example? Are we going to write any letters to any, any of the manufacturers of these products?
There is a state law actually that Senator Allen, I think, has now. And just, I think it passed a senate committee. It'll go to the assembly that would, that would, in, in 2020, would ban polystyrene containers. This would, if this ordinance were enacted, it would just beat that deadline of, of, by about, well, three years.
And it also, if, for instance, you would adopt the Davis ordinance, it is, provides more environmental protection than the state. The state sets a very, very minimum that you can do and then you can require more protection.
So these would be, so the styrofoam containers will be replaced by?
There's, there's a whole bunch of different options.
What, what, what are the options?
Some of them are bamboo, some of them are sugarcane. Sugarcane's the newest, most durable one.
They're all environmentally friendly?
Yeah. Sugarcane ones essentially melt. And sugarcane is a byproduct of the sugar process. So it essentially melts into the environment in a matter of significantly less time.
Cool, okay. I like that. I'd like to see straws. We, us do something about straws in the future. I mean, we can have pla, we can have paper straws. I mean, I don't have a problem with that. I'm kind of nervous about this though. I, I, I don't want other products to come up that are going to be just as bad or worse.
I mean, I think this was a platform that Commissioner, or Councilman Cassidy has, has pushed for a while. But I think this is just a start of many things that we can look at during the road. I mean, there's plastic bans, you know, different plastics that are out there that aren't recyclable. So make sure they go in that direction, you know, looking at straws, looking at those types of things, you know, down the road. This would be kind of a start. I, I do agree that we probably need to revisit the, the bags that are being used at Vaughn's.
Well, not just Vaughn's. No, I'm not saying Vaughn's. Everywhere, everywhere. Everybody has plastic bags. They're, they're all over. So Vaughn's is just a way that they could start making 25 cents off every bag that they.
The ones also not, the ones they're selling are not single use. But the, but the prohibition was from the single use plastic bags. And so they've gone with multiple use bags.
I mean, those suckers last a long time.
So I, I know, and I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. We've been here for four and a half hours and I, I am a little bit tired, but I wanted to make sure that, that we were even in favor of talking about this before we spent a significant amount of time. So I know that Pam and probably Leslie and, and there's a couple of other comments from the public that I want to make sure we, we talk about as well.
Yeah, if I could, you know, we introduced a timeframe for this. We also introduced a, a fee structure. It seemed to go hand in hand with some of the others that are out there. So that'd be something that we look to, to incorporate as well.
What are the, what are the, the business owners? I mean, I, I think I heard you touch on that. So the price for a container is going to go up like, what, 12, 16, 19 cents or something? So that's all going to reflect on, on the consumer, correct?
We haven't got down to that point. Working with Cap Bev, they are looking at products. They've given me some samples. They're using a 40% to a 300%. It depends on the, the base material that you use. Some of the stuff that breaks down quicker is a little more expensive. Some that maybe lasts a little longer is a little less expensive. So at this point, we're just in a range. We can continue to get more information and report back on, on those findings.
Are we really making a significant impact on the environment here? Can anybody answer that?
Oh, absolutely. Our landfill alone.
Yeah, I think coastal communities are particularly vulnerable because of not only the landfill in our case, but I think our, our coast, our fish, our fish areas that plast, this sty, polystyrene gets into the ocean and, and it's consumed by, by sea creatures and, and the coastal probably are impacted more maybe even than other communities.
Is there something more we can do?
It's lightweight. It flies away.
And it's got those properties. Is there something more we can do?
Is there more?
Like I'm saying, is there something more we can do right now? I mean, let's say we write a letter to the manufacturers of styrofoam and let them know what we're doing. I mean.
We're not having to fight a battle with the styrofoam people like the paper, the plastic bag people. That was the fight from the oil companies. Styrofoam people don't seem to be saying much of, if they did, they're not saying anything anymore. It's just happening.
And, and I, I think the council member also was asking about the business community. We did make sure that, 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 that the chamber was, was notified and what I believe, and I correct me, Jim, if I'm wrong, that there had been at this point, no negative responses to the, to the proposal. So.
What do they say, Jim?
I, is that?
I, I had zero response to two emails to the full membership.
Cool. All right, I think we're doing something good. Cindy, bring this up. Is this your?
Yeah, and, and I also just want to add that, you know, the, I know that I'm not sure where city staff had called around, but I, I don't think that the, the amount of money in increasing cost is as significant as even we found. And I'm just going to throw out the hypothetical that I'm a member of an organization that does a wine festival each year. In the years past, we've purchased plastic plates at a dollar 30 a plate. I found a, these sugarcane plates, they're 35 cents a plate and they're biodegradable. So I've been looking at different alternatives. I, you know, currently operate a business that has packaging. I've seen the changes in packaging options of so many different manufacturers that have come through. You know, the, the amount of, of waste that we even produce or generate is significantly reduced based on, you know, choosing different types of packaging materials. So I don't think the cost, you know, is as big of a deal as it may be. There are some vendors in town, restaurants that are charging for their to-go containers. And I also think that, you know, there are more corporations out there that are already trying to limit their use of, you know, things like the styrofoam peanuts. We're very, 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 very rarely do we ever see those anymore. So I, I mean, I just see that so much is changing in general. I know that the only place in town that you can currently get a styrofoam cooler is at Vaughn's. So, you know, there's, there's fewer and fewer of those around. There's, you know, people are taking that into consideration and, and so I see that change.
Okay, somebody from the community wants to say something?
Thank you. See if I can get my brain working. So just to give some background, because I owned a restaurant, I'm going to recommend in order to make things easier and to ease into this, just do what Manhattan Beach did first. It's a two-page ordinance. It says simply, you can't use containers that are made of polystyrene. And the reason that you don't want to do that, and I talked to our trash people, is because number one, there's no market for styrofoam. It can't be recycled. You can't do anything with it. And the other reason is because the damage it does to people. It's a probable carcinogen, especially when it's full of hot foods, greasy foods. And so the easiest thing is to just tell people, look, you can't use the styrofoam containers or cups anymore. And then spend a little more time looking at whether you really want to impose the cost on people of going to fully compostable materials because right now they are pretty expensive. I mean, I did corn cups. I did all of it. And particularly cutlery is really expensive. But as an alternative to that, you could. But as an alternative to that, you could consider going to, it has to be made of 100% recycled material because then at least there's some benefit to the planet in that it's, um, been reused and so forth. So I, I'm just recommending that you start ease, simply with the ban, with the lead in time and then go to see whether there's other things that you want to do.
Huh. That was simple.
I'll save us.
Leslie Warner, 306 Whitley, thank you, um, for considering this so late. The other thing, I, people have been saying, well, when you go to Vaughn's, the meat comes in styrofoam or the, sometimes the mushrooms come in a styrofoam package. In the Manhattan Beach ordinance, those are exempt.
Yes.
So people don't freak out that you're not going to be able to buy your steak at Vaughn's if it comes in styrofoam, right? It's baby steps, the way I see it. And if Vaughn's will cooperate and perhaps not sell the ice chests, not sell the cups, not sell the plates, we're going to make a huge impact. And also in your ordinance, if you would please include city events. So if somebody is having an event, they cannot use styrofoam. Anything at Joe Machado, they cannot use styrofoam. People's Park, same thing. If you can enforce that or have them sign it in the contract, I think we would stop a lot of styrofoam. So thank you so much.
Your input is valuable. Thank you, Leslie. Okay.
So I guess we would be making a motion to direct staff to return on June 20th for the first reading of the proposed polystyrene ban ordinance and hear community input.
I already did.
Huh?
That's the motion I made.
Oh, you already did?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, I missed that.
Okay.
It's, it's late.
Further comments? Call for the vote.
No, I need a second.
A second.
Oh, I got.
Who's second?
Second.
Third.
Fourth.
Are we voting yet?
Yes, we're voting.
Yeah. I'd like to, I thought the city manager actually.
That was easy.
What, what did he do?
What number are we on now?
On the last one. Fees, relevant impact fees.
Just as an intro on this, I know Bob, uh, Greenlaw wanted to, wanted to, but, but the, the council is one of your priorities, I remember even during interviews for this job, uh, said that you wanted to take, uh, and develop, uh, appropriate development impact fees just to, so the development, new development pays its way and that the burden of new development is not borne by the taxpayers. Um, uh, so that, this is a product of that. An RFQ was sent out, uh, the RFQ was request for qualifications, uh, and we had some respondents. Uh, when, when Mr. Greenlaw came on, he has a lot of experience in this area and he reviewed those and Mr. Greenlaw, with your, Mayor, with your permission.
You stole my thunder.
I'd like to authorize the city manager.
I'll take us on home here. It's, it's late, so.
Oh, we were home.
Okay, so the item proposes to authorize city manager to execute a contract with Michael Baker for the preparation of the, uh, development impact fee study for a amount not to exceed $70,000 and also authorize amending the existing budget to allocate funds for the same.
Second.
Okay. Um, and the purpose of the activity, like city manager said, was to ensure that development pays its own way and for the impacts and creates and relieves the city taxpayers of this burden. And one thing to, important to note, that development fees can also help streamline the development approval process as the typical impacts have been identified and quantified in a per unit basis in, in advance of any development proposal. So developers know what they're getting into.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah.
So four proposals received. Um, I went through those myself and rated them, I had a scoring system. Uh, we looked at, um, and this was put out in the, the request for qualifications, so they knew how it was going to be evaluated. So their work plan and approach that demonstrated an understanding of what we were trying to do for the product, experience and reputation of doing the subject matter, price and time. And the most qualified firm that that resulted in was MB, um, Michael Baker and Associates, okay? So, um.
And it was the least expensive, I believe.
Least expensive. Um, potential fee categories, just quickly go over those. So we're looking at capacity improving, uh, impacts, water and saltwater capacity, sewer treatment and collection system, reclaimed water, park and recreation facilities, major public safety, equipment, capital fund, transportation facilities, traffic circulation, safety infrastructure and traffic control, street impact mitigation, so some of those damages that, uh, vehicles would make to the asphalt, public facilities including the animal shelter and the corporation yard, off-street parking fund, workforce housing mitigation fund, which is an important one.
Yeah, it is.
Uh, refuge site improvements and closure fund and any additional ones that the study brings out. And some of these could be dropped off the list because as we get through the study, we'll realize that maybe the administrative processing of those fees maybe becomes more than the actual fee. It doesn't, it's not worth actually charging a fee for that one. That's what I found in my past experience at Pulte Bute County, at Chi, at City of Chico, when I implemented these programs, so.
You mean like kayak racks?
Yeah, of course, yes. So you, you end up only gathering maybe a thousand dollars for a whole lot of administrative costs, okay? So, um, questions?
No, very good.
Move Steph.
Second.
Move your second comments? Oh, I was hoping so.
Question I had, and I don't know the answer to it, is whether the hospital would qualify as an impact on, and that's kind of a strange question given our relationship with the hospital property and building, but.
I don't know, but.
I just throw that out.
It is interesting.
It wasn't on the list.
It is an interesting, um, uh, something, if you wish, we can just take a look at it, we'll talk with legal.
If the hospital was.
Well, the, the city owns the hospital facility, uh, but it operated by a.
It would be incorporated in.
For more capacity, maybe the need for more beds.
Okay.
Well, 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 the other question would be on that because when we have to tear that sucker down.
Well, someone.
Or remodel it because it's ours.
Okay, yeah, well, that's the, yes, and then, but, but we, if you wish, we can take a look at that issue and see how that might.
So it's for.
Thank you, Pam. Thank you, Leslie.
Yeah, it's for capacity improvements, not deficiencies, okay?
Right, right.